Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded August 15, 2023.
We call the Portage County Board to order, and the clerk will call the roll.
We have sixteen supervisors present. We have six supervisors remote. That's Supervisor Hemrich, Supervisor Maresi, Supervisor Pataki, Supervisor Sislevich, Supervisor Rahakala, and Supervisor Chikowski. And we have two members that are absent, Supervisor Morrow and Supervisor Rakowski.
Pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation is by Supervisor Rakowski, who is not here tonight. He had a family emergency. So I am going to give it, and I would ask for a moment of silence for all of the people in the Hawaiian Islands that have lost a loved one in the recent fires. I just ask for a moment of silence. And I'd ask for you to keep all of the folks that work very hard every day to keep all of us safe, safe themselves, the military, the law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, and highway workers. Amen. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time. With such comments subject to reasonable control of the county board chair is set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. We have a full agenda. We have a lot of topics. I'm going to limit that to one hour tonight. I'd like to inform everyone that would like to speak tonight to please register. And I will ask when we get to the end if there's time allotting, if there's anybody else. Comments will be held to three minutes each. There is no time that is left over to be given to someone else to use. We have a large number of people here that would like to speak today. So in the interest of time, I would ask, if you don't have anything different to say than something someone else has already said, please just say, "I agree with these other folks," and state your name so it's on the record. We are here today to talk, discuss, debate, or simply educate one another not to blame, attack, personally attack or criticize. If that happens, I will ask you to refrain. And if you continue, you will be asked to leave. I ask that we are respectful and do not heckle others while they are speaking, even if you don't agree with them or clap. We are in a public setting and should conduct ourselves as such. So thank you. With that, we have correspondence. Yeah, we'll take the public comment at this time. So go ahead and...
First up, we have Marnie Mercer, and then Danny Mercer.
Hi, my name is Marnie Mercer, and I live in District 12. I've had the fortunate experience in my life of working in both government and business. I spent fourteen years as a police officer, including eleven years as a detective sergeant and lieutenant in the Special Victims Unit, where I served as a liaison to immigrant and refugee groups to increase their trust in law enforcement. I now work in HR for a Fortune 200 company where I create and lead DEI strategy. So I know the impact DEI can make in a community as a government employee, as a business leader, and as a citizen. I also have a unique outlook on Portage County because unlike many, I didn't grow up here. I moved here two years ago after making a conscious decision about where I wanted to live. As opportunities for remote work grow, there are going to be many more people who get to make this intentional choice. By 2028, millennials and Gen Z will be the predominant force in politics. Economic growth is not their sole driver. They want to see more accessible healthcare. They want to see expanded access to mental healthcare. They want action on climate change. They want communities that are diverse and walkable where they can come to create and innovate and be involved. I've heard people say that the community is confused about the point of the DAI Committee and that its purview is not well-defined. If that is the case, then change the committee charter. Don't get rid of the committee. I've heard people say that the activities of the committee are better suited for other areas like Human Resources or HHS. If that is the case, then move the committee. Don't jettison it. I've heard people say that the committee represents wasteful spending that should be cut because the work is going on elsewhere. But the people in this ambiguous elsewhere have said they don't have the time, the resources, or in some cases, the inclination to take on the work. If the work does belong elsewhere, shouldn't we show that these places are ready and able to take it before we get rid of the committee? I ask you, as elected officials, to look around this room. Do you truly see the diversity of this community reflected in its government? Now, none of you can be expected to change the circumstances of your birth or the fact that you were elected. But you can take a moment to see through another perspective. See it through the eyes of the woman who looks at this body of eighty-four percent men and wonders if she has a place. See it through the eyes of the immigrant who looks at this body and sees no faces like theirs. See it through the eyes of the elderly who look at this body and wonder if they're going to be made to travel two counties over to find healthcare. See it through the eyes of the LGBTQ-plus student who looks at this body and wonders if they are safe with its members. For I was a stranger, and you welcomed me. At its core, DEI is about creating a committee that is welcoming to all people. We can continue to argue over the reasons for this decision, whether redundancy or fiscal responsibility or just plain politics. But what the marginalized members of this community will remember today is whether you were willing to stand up for them, whether you welcome the stranger living among you or not.
Danny Mercer, and then Eric Olson.
Thank you for your time. My name is Danny Mercer. I live in District 12. If we see a person outside this building in a wheelchair, we realize that we need to offer them a way to get into the building. Stairs are made for people that are walking. A wheelchair can't access it. Simply put, put a ramp. Put in an elevator so they can get to the second floor. These are all very easy things to fix because we can see this person and realize the need that they have. There are many people in our county that we do not see, and we do not see their needs, people who are not represented. DEI is implemented in order to ensure that everyone is represented and everyone has a seat at the table. From what I read, the DAI Committee was not really given a clear mission from its inception, a nebulous direction to meander towards perhaps, but nothing concise. The DAI Committee has given approximately eighteen to twenty hours over the last two years to do their work. No brainstorming sessions, no contact between meetings. Simply put, I feel the DAI Committee was starved. They were neglected and then blamed when it did not accomplish a mission no one was really truly sure of. Wanting to boost the signal on Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday or Pride Month, as an example, is exactly where DEI shines. We all know there already is a holiday, but we are not reinventing those holidays. We simply want to make sure that the voices behind those holidays are represented and heard. DEI is not divisive. It recognizes that there are differences in people for a multitude of reasons and recognizes that America has always intended to be a melting pot. All are welcome. Bring us your huddled masses. Second point, District 16 announced through a majority vote in April of 2022, they did not want Steve Fritz to represent them. Two hundred and sixteen votes for Mike Olson versus one hundred and forty-three. To go forward with an appointment of someone that your constituents in that district specifically said, "Yeah, we don't want this person," is, in my opinion, a reprehensible move. I would ask you not to appoint him to that position. Thank you.
Eric Olson, and then Lori Moyer.
Good afternoon, Eric Olson. I live on the west side of Stevens Point. I guess I want to comment on a couple of things here. The first one is that I would agree with the gentleman that we are now kind of getting into a state where we are eroding the democratic nature of this board. When two members are appointed and can't really claim to be representative of the district that they're appointed to represent, then this is no longer a representative body. These become unrepresentative members of the board. So please be careful appointing unrepresentative people to fill vacancies on the board. My next comment would be on number twelve, the contract being proposed with Synovations. It's my understanding that this wasn't put out to any sort of call for proposals or request for qualifications. Instead, this was an entity that was recommended by the architect who's been handling the process for a new government facility of some sort and has been handling that process since 2018. To me, this seems like they're basically trying to throw some hail marys. That would be sort of an optimistic way to look at it. Another way to look at it, though, is that you're being asked to contract somebody to interview the board members to find who might have an arm that might be sensitive to twisting. And in that process, there will likely be some vote counting happening, sort of determining who might be willing to change their vote. You might wonder if these are all going to be, A, public records, and B, whether if these meetings constitute a running quorum of the board when the person is basically interviewing them to ascertain how sensitive they are to changes in the proposals. Regarding number twenty-one, diversity affairs and inclusivity, I think that dissolving this committee at this point does not really demonstrate leadership. It doesn't really save the county money. And it does, however, send a clear signal to people out in the community who are wondering if Portage County is a welcoming place, if this is a place where they could feel that they fit in, when we say, "Meh, we tried to do diversity affairs and inclusivity for about five years, and it proved to be really difficult, and it's hard. And so instead, we're just going to dissolve the committee." That sends a signal to people. Finally, number twenty-two, you have in front of you a capital budget. I think this is interesting that the capital budget is being presented to you. I suspect this is the way that the budget has been administered for many decades in Portage County prior to having a county executive. I would point out, however, that since, I believe, 2004, you actually have had a county executive, and the capital budget and the budget is to be presented to the board by the executive. Instead, what you have is a budget that's kind of coming out of a finance committee with a bunch of things that are sort of, I guess, placeholders or theoretical things. Nobody really feels like they're going to stand behind the things that are in the capital budget. So I guess it's just sort of a figment of our imagination. I guess in that regard, you can vote however you want to on the capital budget, but I think it doesn't do justice to the fact that we have a county executive and that we need to start planning these things now. Thank you.
Lori Moyer, and then Peyton Kowalski.
Thank you. My name is Lori Moyer. I live in District 16, soon to be represented by a gentleman who referred to me, not specifically, but in general, as one of those mouth-breathing, Kool-Aid-drinking Democrats. So I am a resident of Portage County, and I need to tell all of you about this committee that I guess you could say I oversee it. This committee, it's supposed to be made up of people who are part of minority groups that are underrepresented or maybe haven't been well-represented in government. You know, maybe a person who's black, maybe a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, maybe a member of our Hmong community. But I mean, you know, I, as a straight, white, female business owner, who understands inequity and inequality better than me, especially for someone like, say, a gay black man? I mean, after all, I hired one once. I even hired a Mexican once. He was great. So I just don't think this Diversity, Equity, Equality Committee is even needed. I mean, heck, look at the makeup of our county board. I mean, have you ever seen a better example of diversity? So anyway, I'm in charge of this thing, and I can't just disband it without cause. I'd look like a bigot or a racist. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to appoint a couple of people that look like they represent minority groups. One woman, she's part Chinese. She's got a lot of corporate knowledge. In fact, what I really like about her is she uses this term ruthless prioritization. And then this other guy, he's half-Mexican, but he's a landlord, so he owns a ton of properties. And I can't think of anybody better to represent poor and marginalized people than the guy who would rent to those people. So I think what I'm going to do, I can't make it look like I'm trying to sabotage the committee. So anytime the chairperson of this committee, who's an expert in the topic, by the way, and don't even get me started on that, but at each of these monthly meetings when this expert guy suggests some sort of progressive idea for this committee, I'm going to have those two, those other two that I spoke of, I'm going to have them shoot down those ideas, saying they're too expensive. And then what I'm going to do, I'm going to have them float an idea like it's something they just came up with. But here's the kicker. They already know that work is being done by other committees. So then the expert, he's going to say, "Okay, let's put that on the agenda for the next month's meeting." And then by the time we get to that meeting, those two that I put on the committee, they're going to come back with all this evidence and say, "Look, all this work's already being done. The work of this committee, it's redundant. It isn't necessary. Look at all the money we're going to save the taxpayers because this work is already happening." I figure it's going to not take me that long, maybe a year or so, to prove that the work of this committee isn't necessary. Pretty smart, right? The work of EDI, and I use the word equity. The word equity should have never been taken out of the ADNI Committee. The work of EDI is important, and I, for one, would like to see what this committee could achieve if we assigned to it people who believed in the work of the committee and weren't there to sabotage it. Thank you.
Peyton Kowalski, and then Tanya Kowalski.
Hello, my name is Peyton Kowalski. I grew up here in Stevens Point. I'm also bisexual and I'm non-binary. I'd like to share with you a few examples of why we still need work to be done in this county and why we still need that committee. Even though HR departments have been working on diversity for years, because I'm non-binary, whenever I go somewhere and I have to fill out forms, there's never an option for me under gender. It's male or female. Occasionally, I get the option of "prefer not to say," but I do want to say. It's just that there's not an option for me. So every time I fill something out, I have to pretend I'm someone I'm not. Additionally, I prefer to use the title "mix" as my name is Mix Kowalski, not Miss, not Ms. But again, I've only seen it on one form, and that was at my college in a different county and in a different city. These are things that gender-conform people need to take for granted and something that I don't get to experience. Like I said, I'm non-binary. If I were to explain my identity better, I would say I'm a demi-fenome who is bisexual, and I prefer to use they/them pronouns. It took me a long time to learn about these labels and feel comfortable with myself. I didn't get to learn about these labels until I went to college because my college had a diversity, inclusion, belonging office. Through their workshops, their resources, events, and staff, I was able to figure out more about myself, and I was able to figure out these feelings that I'd been feeling for several years. Because of a specific group of people, I feel confident in myself. Truly, though, I wish I would figure that out here. I mean, my entire education was in Stevens Point. And although there have been really great teachers at SPAS and all the amazing things I was taught, I was never taught about these things. One exception I got kind of close was in social problems. But that was just a new, thankfully, a new requirement for graduation. Then intro to diversity studies came, which was another great step. But all of my education in diversity and inclusion came down to a single, one semester class. I had a great teacher who worked really hard to educate us. My fellow classmates, they didn't all get that. Not everyone got anything out of these classes, and their one chance to learn about other people was ruined. It's easy to say that teachers are doing it all and that they have time to work on that, but I can guarantee you, as a current teacher, our curriculum's not have time for that. There's very little wiggle room. So unless you're taking a class that's focusing on diversity, which, mind you, you can only do at SPAS because the other three public school districts in this county don't have a diversity class nor do they have a graduation requirement for their students. Unless you have a class, you're not guaranteed to learn anything about diversity or inclusivity. Growing up in Stevens Point, there hasn't always been this group that's been focusing on the marginalized people in our area. In fact, our group didn't show up until 2020. I was already in college by then. But it was so reassuring to know that my county cared about me and that people liked me and that they want to try and work with these marginalized people and get them what they needed. I was so proud of my hometown and gave me pride in where I came from. Taking the community away takes away the progress and the growth that we made. Now, I can only really speak out about how the impact that will happen for the LGBTQ community. But if I can sit here and tell you about all the impacts in that one community or the other impacts that all the other communities are going to feel too. Thank you.
Tanya Kowalski, and Shannon Lewis.
When I attended and spoke at the Executive Operations Committee meeting on July 5th, I was disheartened that the community members believed our county did not need a diversity and inclusion work group because one person claimed to have hired an African-American worker once, and he also hired a Mexican worker once. And another claimed to have had medical work done on much of their body, and there wasn't a racist bone in any of them. Those two statements alone prove there's so much work to be done in the areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and justice in our community. It's important when we're talking about, and even more so, voting about diversity issues, to remember that just because something doesn't affect us doesn't mean it isn't important or necessary. I am a straight, white, cisgendered, middle-class Christian pastor, definitely not a minority, practically a poster child of what most people think Stevens Point is. I'm not an underrepresented class or a member of a marginalized group. But yet, I understand and value the people that are not like me and struggle each day to have their voice silenced. Because you can say that people are voiceless, but everybody has a voice. We just choose to silence them. Everyone deserves the same quality of life that I have. In the same way, I will always be a champion for veterans' rights and services, even though I've never served in our armed forces. You don't have to live the life of someone else to understand and respect their struggle. I'll end with a reminder that diversity does not only refer to race and sexuality. It includes economic situation, religion, ability, gender, age, and more. I experienced an example of this just last week. I work in a dental office in our town, and I received a phone call from a person who was calling to see if we were accepting new patients. She had recently become disabled and is now wheelchair-bound. She could no longer go to her dentist because they only had stairs at the entrance. She needed a transfer to a new provider that was accessible. This means that there are public-facing businesses in our community that are not ADA compliant, another area of opportunity in diversity work. The message in the vote is simple. Our county needs to make sure it's truly accessible for everyone. Thank you.
Shannon Lewis, and then Mark Beistrum.
Hi, my name's Shannon Lewis. I've lived in Portage County for over thirty years, and I raised a multicultural family in this community. And I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 21. I, too, attended the Executive Board meeting last month, and I, too, was disheartened to see a board of all the same race, all the same gender, very similar age, similar ability. And with the exception of one gentleman who is here, and I, sorry, I don't know your name, but I appreciated you because you didn't say you were pro-DEI or anti-DEI, but you said, "I don't have all the questions I have answered, so for that, I need more time, and I'm not going to vote to dissolve this." And I think that's the key. The others just determined that it wasn't necessary. And so I would encourage you instead, since we know your board is not diverse, right? We know it's not, and we can't help that right now. But what I would encourage you is to reach out to your constituents because they are diverse. And so talk to your visually impaired constituents. Talk to your constituents that use a wheelchair to get around and find out from them, are our transportation services inclusive for them? Talk to someone who's black, Asian, or Hispanic in our community and ask them what it feels like to walk in their skin in our community. Because, like others have said, just because you don't feel the impact or the value of it doesn't mean it's not happening. I don't use the city bus, but I know it's really important to people who do, right? I know you've also shared that it was the job of HR to do it as an HR professional in this community who is also on the DEI council at my company. I can tell you, we don't have the ability to control your city ordinances and laws. So we can educate our employees and help there, but you really can't put that on us to do it for the whole county. You actually had one of your county employees share the microaggressions that she experiences daily as a county employee. And it was kind of sad. Nobody asked her any other questions about that experience. You didn't ask her to elaborate, and you didn't even offer up an apology for what she experiences daily. So I think what we really need to do is, we have a great community. We know we have a great community here in Portage County, but we also know we can be better by listening and learning, right? Because we don't know it all. So I would urge you to acknowledge we don't have all the voices in the room today, and the board isn't representative of our entire community. And so I'd ask you to connect with your marginalized constituents, And so I'd ask you to connect with your marginalized constituents, get their insight before you make a decision to dissolve the DEI committee. I thank you in advance for helping make our community as welcoming and inclusive as it can be. Thank you.
Mark Beistrum, and then Tori Jennings.
Hello, I'm Mark Beistrum from Plover, and my wife Sandra is here. She has approved this message, since we're of the same mind on this issue as well. Sandra and I have been doing what a lot of families do periodically, cleaning up around our home, tossing out some things that don't work anymore, donating to charity, and just generally reevaluating some things that seemed like a good idea at the time, but are no longer needed because they're redundant, or, and I'm probably responsible for most of this in our home, something that just wasn't a very good idea in the first place. And that's something that I think we all wish government would do more often. Yeah, I get it. Sometimes we hang on to things for appearances' sake. Well, if we have this, other people will see it and be impressed or think that we care for that reason. And that's the impression that I have, listening to some folks who support the DAI Committee. And the fact that the committee hasn't accomplished anything of practical value almost seems beside the point to some of these folks. They seem to say, "Well, we need to have it so other people can see we have it and believe that we care about this issue." And we all do care about the issues people face. But it's just one more way of virtue signaling at taxpayer expense, in my opinion. Now, as you know, other counties have been down this road before. Marathon County had a diversity committee that was not accomplishing anything of practical value in their community, so they made the decision to end it. Winnebago County also dissolved their diversity committee. And now Portage County, in my opinion, should do the same. Our county government is able to address any legitimate issues a diversity committee might be concerned with. Now, please, by saying this, I'm not implying anything negative about the people serving on the DAI Committee. This is a group of intelligent and capable people who I believe are sincere in their desire to serve our community. And that's all the more reason to allow these capable people to serve where their time and talents will hopefully be put to better use. Thank you.
Tori Jennings, and then Jack Elsinger.
Thank you. I'll be speaking to several items. First is item number eight. For the second time in as many months, Chair Haga has filled a vacancy on the county board with somebody who does not represent the majority of their district and is actually the least qualified among applicants. Steve Fritz lost the spring 2022 election to Mike Olson by a margin of 143 to 216. Rather than respect the democratic process, Chair Haga has focused instead on the assurance of another yes vote for the Greenfield site and cooperation in undermining the healthcare center. While this appointment says more about the political calculations of the chair than the applicant himself, Mr. Fritz makes his strong political partisan views and conspiracy theories public knowledge on social media, where he mocks elected officials and the institutions of government. I urge you to vote no on that appointment. Item number 12. My first question regarding hiring innovations, or any consultant, to quote, "talk with the board about where we are at," unquote, is why hire a consultant at all when Executive Pavelski, Sheriff Lucas, Chair Jankowski are setting up the questions, protocol, and who will be included in the process? That's in the packet from Space and Properties. In other words, elected officials whose biases and intentions are well-known will establish from the outset the results of this consulting work. Employing a consultant to rehash well-trodden territory will likely be another waste of taxpayer dollars. Item 21. Since the July 5th Executive Operations Meeting, I have been contemplating how to respond to comments made by supervisors and the executive about equity, diversity, and inclusivity, abbreviated EDI, and their collective effort to dissolve the DAI Committee. In short, there is no simple statement that can address the scope of structural racism embedded in the comments made by supervisors, board chair, and county executive at the July 5th meeting. I left that meeting feeling a bit sick, actually. Their comments and lack of knowledge are themselves justification for the need to retain and support the DAI Committee. Arguments about redundancy, cost savings, or productivity are simply nonsense. If there is a problem with the committee, fix it. If the values of Portage County are to deny the facts of racism and inequality, then state it. At least be honest. However, as was demonstrated at Executive Ops, county leaders who simultaneously invalidate the experiences of people and use racist rhetoric but have no awareness of doing so are incapable of identifying workforce patterns based on the lived experiences of marginalized communities. I urge you to vote no on item 21, and help build a path forward for the DAI Committee and Portage County. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Jack Elsinger, and then Mary McComb.
Thank you, Jack Elsinger, Town Hall. I have personally actually attended well over ninety percent of the Diversity Affairs and Inclusiveness Committee meetings since the inception of DAI. Therefore, I believe I have a good grasp of what has transpired with it. The following is a timeline of the only accomplishments of the aforementioned committee. February 2021, resolved to reaffirm Martin Luther King Day. It's already a national holiday. That's redundant. March 2021, resolved to evaluate the inventory of non-gender neutral maintenance and construction signs. The term "men working" was not gender-inclusive and was offensive to some on the committee. This is rather superficial and ridiculous. Result, also in that month, resolved to support SB 120 and AB 108 regarding law enforcement agencies' policies on the use of force. It was noted that the Portage County Sheriff's Department's policies already mirror these bills, so this is also redundant. April 2021, resolved to support Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is redundant. Also resolved to stand against hate, bias, and violence toward Asians or Asians-Americans. I would ask seriously, we actually need a resolution for this? June 2021, resolved to recognize June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. This is redundant. October 2022, resolved to obtain an opinion from corporate counsel regarding the legality of the clerk of courts reaching out to renters with financial resource information. This is redundant to other county committees. In March 2023, resolved to send a questionnaire by the committee to members of the Portage County Department heads. In conclusion, this committee appears to be a solution which is unable to find a problem. This committee is redundant. In the interest of good government, it needs to be disbanded because DAI's work is already being done by other county committees. Thank you.
Mary McComb, and then Dave Iden.
Mary McComb, 2100 Elk Street, Stevens Point. I'm a native of Stevens Point. The last county board meeting I attended, County Executive Pavelski said in passing that he believed God put you supervisors in your posts. If there is a God, and if God gets into the tiny details of human affairs, then maybe they did. If God follows Christian precepts, then God said these words, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me." And if you take the time to listen to people in marginalized communities, you'll find lots of examples in which they feel that they're treated as the least of people. Does God want you to vote to silence the voices and the ideas of Portage County's diverse residents? If you believe God put you in your seat, you better listen to them.
My name is Dave Iden, lifelong Stevens Point resident. Thank you, Mr. Chair and county board members, for the ability to address you tonight. I am urging you to dissolve this committee for various reasons, some which I had spoke of in the past. I personally feel it would be the Division Intimidation and Exclusion Committee. As I had pointed out, being a white male, I feel marginalized, and I don't feel that there is any diversity or inclusion, because I seem to be the target of one of this committee's problems here. As was pointed out also, the committee has arrived at nothing. There was an opportunity early on in the committee where a resolution was brought forth, which asked the committee to recognize opposing any and all racism in all of its forms. The call was made three times for this to be recognized, and it wasn't recognized. It tells me quite simply that this committee isn't about diversity and inclusion or recognizing any of these things. It's more than frustrating to even sit through one of these meetings, let alone when it really boils down to is some of the problems that they really want to underscore. And I will reference the transgender issue in this regard. When it comes to marginalization, and they point out that, you know, we want to get children fortunate enough to make it out of the womb, and we want to ruin their lives in fifth, for first grade and second grade and kindergarten, attempting to get them to believe that they can be whatever or whoever they want, when litter boxes are in the schools for those who think that they aren't even human and animal, this is part of what DEI is about. And that being the case, there is no place in government for this. It's simply wrong. And again, I will end with just urging you to do it as right and proper. And please end this committee as we already have these things covering people in human resources and among other places. Thank you all for your time.
Carrie Prokop, and then John.
You don't ask me. Spell it.
Hello, my name is Carrie Prokop, and I'll just keep it real short and sweet. I'm just asking you to dissolve the DAI Committee. Thank you.
Next up is John, and then Keith Kudrowski.
John, can you pronounce your last name for us?
My last name is Weyda, John Weyda. So I've been a resident of the Stevens Point area for about nineteen years. Marriage brought me to this area. Otherwise, I grew up on a family farm. And I just want to say that I had nine siblings, and when you run a family business like that, a lot of times you don't need a lot of committees. You just need people that get the job done through the organizations. I also worked in banking and trucking, and I can tell you that there's a lot of laws out here already that allow us to... When I worked in trucking and training, there's enough laws out here currently that allow us to take care of many of the issues that this committee does not seem to be able to take care of. So I would encourage you to listen to the comments of Jack Elsinger, Elsinger, and then vote against for the committee or just to disband it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Keith Kudrowski, and then Dylan McCuskey.
Keith Kudrowski, Stevens Point, speaking on Agenda Item 21, voting in support of dissolution of the Diversity Affairs and Inclusiveness Committee. Thank you, Chair Haga, and the board for allowing me to speak. This is a very contentious issue. The name of the committee sounds so wonderful with its catchy buzzwords, diversity, awareness, inclusion of, so heartwarming. Sadly, the way this issue is addressed today by most government entities, they separate people into boxes, create division and classes. This action itself is divisive, not inclusive. So is the DAI Committee here to resolve a problem or to create a problem to resolve? I believe the latter. They label people by race, by age, by gender, by religion, by financial status, and other personal traits. They label some as incapable of being able to accept anyone who isn't 100% the same as themselves, and then label others as being incapable of being successful because of their perception of these people's personal characteristics. The latter in itself is demeaning to those people placed in that box. It's been over three years since formation of this committee, without producing any results that aren't already handled at the federal or state levels of government. Corporations and businesses, however you want to classify them, already have mechanisms in place to address diversity and awareness and inclusiveness in their workplaces. I'd like to take seriously the committee and a lot of the people who spoke today, but two months ago, I was in this very same room. A good friend of mine, very genuine, thoroughly qualified young lady, accepted the county exec's nomination to serve on the library board. All three board members, county board members on the committee, and many of the people who spoke tonight, speaking in favor of keeping this committee together, chastised and berated this lady. The falsehood where they claim she doesn't believe in diversity or inclusion of, that's pure BS. She totally believes in diversity and inclusiveness. She doesn't believe you first have to create division to resolve the solution. I find the hypocrisy of these people rather disgusting and actually more reflective of their unwillingness to have true diversity and inclusion of by rejecting and berating her. You see, the six current members of the library board couldn't be any more different than Carrie, which in my humble opinion should have made her the perfect choice if your goal is diversity and inclusiveness. It truly was embarrassing to know there are people in my community who are so hateful and shortsighted. Whichever way the vote goes tonight, I would ask all these people to go home tonight, look at themselves in the mirror, honestly ask themselves if they truly believe in unity, diversity, and inclusion of in our community, or simply want me to shut up and fall in line. With that, ask the board to dissolve the committee. Thank you.
Dylan McCuskey.
And if there's anybody else that would like to speak after that, come into the room, and then we'll ask you to just state your name for the record. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Dylan McCuskey. I'm out here from Amherst, actually. From all that I've been hearing, I do not think that there has been any useful propositions that have been come forward out of this committee, and that, as it has been stated, whatever has been generated from this committee is things that either already exist or could much better be serviced on other scales. There are both federal and, I believe, state initiations, actions as well. I think to the one example there was of the dentist office that didn't have wheelchair access. Is that not the case where it should be the job of human resources to look into that and get that solved? I do stand on the LGBTQ+ spectrum, and I can say that I have not seen anything in Portage County that has not already been met with or without this committee over the last thirty-plus years that I have lived my life. Vote no, I mean, vote yes on dissolving this board. Thank you.
Sheriff, is there anybody else that you see that... No? Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
Health and Human Services 2022 Annual Report is included. Number three, upcoming county board and finance committee meeting dates and information related to the county budget. Number four, the 2023-2024 Wisconsin Counties Officials Directory. And then number five, the Emergency Services Citizens Academy for 2023. I think the sheriff was going to say something.
Sheriff, did you want to say something on the last item, on the Citizens Academy? Yes, I'll make it brief. Just so everybody's aware that the deadline for signing up for the Citizens Academy is a Thursday, and if you haven't had the opportunity, I know some of you have, but some of the new county board members not, and anybody in the public, I strongly encourage you to do this. It starts September 7th and runs through November 9th. It's on Thursdays, and it's a full gamut of all the Citizens Academy in regards to law enforcement, police, fire, EMS. So I strongly encourage it. You'll have a lot of fun. You'll get a lot of insight in regards to the county government, the police and fire and EMS procedures through here in Portage County. So if you need more information, let me know. I can talk to you after, or please sign up. There is no charge. Somebody was saying that there's a charge for it. There is no charge for that. Thank you. Has anybody in here in attendance been on that? Please raise your hand. If... Oh, then we got some citizens in the back.
I highly recommend it. I was on there about ten years ago, and I actually rode the Lightning for five seconds all the way to the ground. So, no, it's a super class. If you're a citizen or an elected official, it gives you a real good taste of what these gentlemen have to go through every day to keep us safe, and the fire department also on top of them.
Supervisor Maresi, I'll put you on the spot. I believe you were there as well and had attended it.
It was fantastic. I could not ask for anything more. We have an amazing emergency service group out there, and they're coordinated, they are tireless, very, very good people. And the education that I received in terms of what they do, how they do it, and their intentions behind it was top-notch. They even have an incredible sense of humor. I was jazzing them a little bit. The day we were going to go shooting at the range, I stopped in at Triggs to buy a bunch of donuts for the cops, because I've heard that they like donuts. Went there, there was like two donuts left, so I couldn't buy them. And when I got to the shooting range, one of the deputies had basically bought the entire Triggs baby donuts. And it was beautiful, and he was living on his own dime and shared it with everybody, and we had a good laugh about it. So yeah, I highly recommend it. The public goes. Any supervisors, jump on this opportunity. It's second to none. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Next item presentation by Maria Davis, Portage County Clerk, use of Civic Clerk with electronic
So this is the same information that we provided at the Executive Operations Committee meeting. This is to piggyback off of the last memo that was included for the county board meeting. So I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen here. So in conjunction with issuing new laptops... Just going to give it a moment, sorry. So in conjunction with new laptops for 2024, I just wanted to show you a demonstration if you were to use Microsoft Edge and do electronic packets. If we look at tonight in our meeting portal through Civic Clerk, there's been a lot of talk about not being able to view the agenda in addition to the items that supplement those agenda items. So Microsoft Edge has made it very easy to split your screen. Where I'm selecting right here, if you click that, that breaks your screen up into two. There's just a slight delay here, so just one moment. I don't know what's going on. Okay. Is it showing on that screen?
No.
Okay.
It's one big thing.
One.
Page where you get all of your agendas.
So where I'm pulling from is our meeting portal through Civic Clerk. And if you go to the meeting overview site and have the split screen, this gives you the ability to follow along with the agenda item while also opening up supplemental materials. So as this catches up in the delay of the screen, if we were to look at HHS's annual report, and if you were to... and if you were to click the 2022 Annual Report for HHS, the split screen allows you to view that document while still observing the agenda and following along with what's happening. I apologize for the delay. But if you do view the video from Exec Ops, I gave the same demonstration just to show you how you can make both things visible at the same time. And that addresses some of the concerns that supervisors were having as we talk about making that switch. Anything you wanted to say?
So that was one of my big concerns from what I had heard from others when we talked about trying to go to paperless and to move away from that. The other part was the smaller tablets and the laptops. And we are, if this moves through, then we would accelerate the laptops. We are on schedule to have them. And I think it was April of '24, we would have them at the first of the year of '24, when this would go live as well, if that's what we so choose. The other part of it is that right now, the paper is the packets, all of these, is the default. Going forward, it would be the electronic would be the default. But we'd have the ability for someone who needs to have it paper. And we've talked about a myriad of reasons why somebody would need to have a paper, that they have an avenue to have the ability to ask for that. But we want to try and get away from as much of the paper as we can for a number of reasons. One, the cost of printing. We pay three cents for a black-only copy. But as this one has the logo on the top, it's considered a color copy. So that means it's seven cents a copy. Times all of us, plus the mailing of these packets, plus the time that we see in the delay in mailing and how that has changed over the year. A lot of times, people get their packets before the meeting. Sometimes they get it after the meeting. But to see it and pull it up more instantaneous because we were sending it out electronically and posting it. Also, there's a lot of time and labor that goes into creating these packets. And I think our last one was probably a record, but this one isn't far away. The other one we had was probably one inch thick. Now, this one's probably half inch or three-quarters. But these packets seem to get longer, bigger and bigger. And a lot of times, the things that come out of planning and zoning with all the color and the rest of the stuff and all the information, topographics, some of that stuff. So this is something that we'll have on the agenda for next Executive Ops as well. So if there's any thoughts or concerns or comments, please reach out to me so we can be aware of them, so we can bring them up and/or anybody else that's on that Executive Ops Committee too, to talk to them about your concerns or thoughts to try and find a common ground for this. Anybody have any questions or comments, thoughts? Mr. Splinter.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the electronic version and I don't really need a mailed copy. It'd be nice to have something when we're at the meeting to actually look at details. But just this last one alone, the postage on it was $8.50. And you could have saved all the hassle for me. And I'm one of the older generations. If I can do the electronic, then anybody can do it. And just having something here would save you guys so much headaches and time and mailing. So that's where I'm at on it.
And some of this, as budgets get tighter and tighter, we continue to look at opportunities. The spiral-bound things has gone away. Now we just staple them. What are the little books that had the directories, you know? Now we get a paper copy of it. But there's so many of these things where we're just trying to make sure that we're cost-conscious of. And still be able to have all the things that we need to have. So continue to go forward. That's it. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Review and approval of July 18th, 2023 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Any discussion, corrections, changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. County Board Appointments, number eight. Appointment of Steve Fritz to fill District 16, County Board Supervisor vacancies for the remainder of the term expiring April 15th, 2024. Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I have a question or comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. Apologize for my absence. My concern here is, again, just like for the District 3 appointments, we do seem to be appointing, I should say, not we, but the Executive Ops Committee seems to be appointing someone who will kind of fall in line with the agenda to build the Justice Center. While I do agree that we do need to have a Justice Center, we do need to have representative democracy first. And having that means appointing somebody who actually supports the constituents' will within that district. We had the same thing with District 3. Longtime supervisor and another, two longtime supervisors that both applied, could hit the ground running, yet they did not fulfill the mission and same vision as the Executive Operations Committee. And now it's happening again with District 16. We have another former supervisor who could literally walk in the door, take a vote tonight, and understand all of the little nuances of county government and do a very good job, yet they were not chosen because it is suspected that they do not fall in line with the vision for a greenfield site for the Justice Center. That was even asked of him when he talked to members of the Executive Operations Committee. Where do you stand on this? Wow. That is very telling. So I am going to vote no tonight to Mr. Fritz. And I apologize, Steve. You've been a very valuable member on our Solid Waste Board. And I'm not voting against you. I'm voting against the Executive Operations Committee and their process. I do not think it's, that there has been a fulsome discussion and it is an earnest decision that they have made. I think there's a lot more brewing there. I apologize, Steve, and that'll be my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Honnall.
Thank you. And I'd like to second what Supervisor Marie said, that I've enjoyed working with Mr. Fritz on the Solid Waste Committee. But once again, with this opening, it's being, the process seems to be following the same that filling the District 3 opening is. And that was ignoring the fact that other applicants who stepped up to fill in had been elected by people in that district. And the gentleman that was appointed had not been. And the same is appearing to happen again tonight. And it's discouraging that the former supervisor, I do believe, applied and was willing to step back up into this position. And yet, the Executive Ops Committee has decided, once again, that it seems that the voters just don't count. And that's incredibly disturbing the longer it goes on. So I'm with that. With apologies to Mr. Fritz, I will be voting no on his nomination too.
Anybody else? Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, regarding this choice, I was rather disappointed that Mr. John Bertelson was not chosen to take the spot because what I've noticed in the last couple of years is a great stepping up of citizen participation in our county government. And Mr. Bertelson has certainly been in the forefront of people who are paying attention to the issues, coming to the meetings, making well-thought-out comments at the meetings, and writing to, I know he writes to all board members here, and very well-thought-out letters that I always reply to. So I just wanted to register my disappointment that he was not chosen for the site or for the spot. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Pataki.
At the Executive Ops Committee, I voted for Mr. Fritz. Since that time, since that time and listening to what some of the people said tonight and the phone call that I have received, I am not going to vote for Mr. Fritz. And the reason for it is I am a firm believer that there is no Democrats or Republicans as far as county government goes. And when I hear someone making comments either way, whether about Republicans or Democrats, it shows to me that this person is not nonpartisan. And that is the reason I'm going to vote against him tonight.
Anybody else? So when this was placed before us, I put a lot of weight on the fact that Mr. Fritz was the only other candidate. I heard that from the public that he was rejected by the public. None of the other seven applicants ran an election for that position or were willing to raise their hand at that time. It was either convenient or easy to just simply fill out an application and then become a supervisor versus someone who needs to, and as we all do, either run a campaign or have to go out and knock on doors and talk to the people and try and answer the questions. We had the Executive Ops meeting. The only one that showed up was Mr. Fritz and Mr. Bertelson of all the applicants. One of the other people, that was Mr. Martenson, chose not to run for the position in the past because of, for whatever reason. But then when he, you know, we talked about we have somebody that could hit the ground running. His letter that he addressed, addressed it to the county, instead of the county clerk, to the clerk of courts, to Mrs. Roth. You know, and we talk about someone who knows the system and knows that it's going to the county clerk and not the clerk of courts. I look at the fact that we have someone who has been involved in, and I've been criticized of this too, but we've had two people, two supervisors that have resigned. And as we've stated before, there is a lot to be learned as a supervisor and it takes a lot of time to learn all of it. We hear different things from the public and it's like, as supervisors, we know that we don't have the authority to do that or we can't mandate that, we can't control that. And that's one of the things that comes with being a new supervisor until you learn that. And by the time you learn that, that could take a year, two years, three, and then someone resigns and we get someone new in here. Again, this is a six-month appointment and I would be curious to see if there are seven or eight people that take out papers in December for this district, if we get all this public input, all this involvement. You know, I'm a strong believer in getting the public input. I encourage that. I encourage people to come forward. And in this particular case, I look at the fact that there was a choice at the time and it was Mr. Olson and it was Mr. Fritz were the only two that were running for this position. They were the two candidates at the time. So I don't know how many votes the next one behind Steve got. It was zero, all of them. So for that reason, that was why I had voted yes for the nomination of Mr. Fritz as a county board supervisor. So is there any other discussion? Supervisor Honnall.
Chair Haga, I just want to understand that because he ran for office, even though he lost, that's your rationale for nominating him? Even though a supervisor, a former supervisor who had been elected with majority vote from that same district had stepped up, but he sent his letter to the wrong place and you're saying that that was such an error that his application should be discounted? Is that what I heard you say?
No, I believe that someone who ran for the position in this last election carries a lot of weight.
I see. And so that would apply to other kinds of elections where the person who wins the vote steps down and the person who was not voted in becomes the natural candidate. That doesn't make sense to me, Chair Haga. It does to you and I respect that, but it does not make sense to me.
Any other discussion, any other comments? I don't think I have anybody else online. With that, all in favor, vote yes. And opposed, vote no.
No.
Mr. Maresi. Hold on. The people online, hold on one second. The clerk will call you. Is this taking?
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead and vote now, everybody.
Supervisor Maresi? Supervisor Hemrick? Supervisor Morrow? Supervisor Pataki? Supervisor Hakala? Supervisor Jakowski? Supervisor Sislavich? Motion carries 14 to 9.
Next item, number nine. Steve Fritz, District 16 Supervisor, oath of office.
Hi, Steve Fritz.
Hi, Steve Fritz.
Who have been elected to the Office of County Board Supervisor, District 16.
Who have been elected to the just.
Elected to the Office of County Board.
To the Office of County Board Supervisor, District 16.
In and for the county of Portage.
In and for the county of Portage.
In Portage County.
In Portage County.
But not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next item, confirmation of County Executive Committee Appointments and Reappointments, number 10. Reappointment of Sharon Mars to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term expiring September 17. term expiring September thirty, twenty twenty-eight. Motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, appointment of Nicole Martinez to the Public Library Board for a three-year term expiring January thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Take a motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 So, we're going, I, those noes, please state your name so the clerk can get it.
Supervisor Moresi, no.
Supervisor Hakala, no.
Gifford, no.
Rockman, no.
Rockman, no. Is that all, is that it for the noes? Okay.
I abstain. Abstentions?
Okay. Motion carries. Resolution and ordinances, number twelve, authorizing an agreement with Synovations to provide consulting services related to the master facility planning.
This is resolution one hundred and thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Space and Properties Committee.
I'll take a motion by Supervisor Jenkowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. Do we have a presentation as well?
She's gonna do a talk, yeah.
Can I do an introduction?
Okay, go ahead.
Is this working?
No.
It's working now?
No.
I don't know. Try the one up in the front, else Jen. There's one in front of her, too.
Somebody call a bingo game in.
We're having some technical difficulties on this.
How's this?
There we go.
All right. So this proposal has been before Space and Properties Committee twice. First time, we just had some general conversations. Second time, we actually prepared and presented a resolution to the committee. I have a memo in the packet that I'm sure you've all read, but this is just a option to get a sense of where we might be at in terms of our facility planning, maybe take a step back, and kind of see if there's a path forward for what our options might be in preparing this. There's no definitive plan for what that path forward is, because in terms of this proposal, there might not be a path forward, and I think we have to identify that that's, that's one of the options that, you know, we might learn, is that we don't have one, and that we need to assess where we're going to go from there. I think as staff, we were supportive of this option because we're really not sure what to bring forward. We've talked about facilities projects for years. We've developed lots of plans, and nothing has moved forward. So I think we're not supportive of spending any more money on design, spending any more money on other plans, until we have a sense of where we're headed. So this option was kind of brought up as an idea. We're kind of at a position where, as a staff person, I don't know what to recommend as the next option. And again, this is an option for you. It's kind of up to you whether you want to head down this path or not. We've kind of outlined and what Synovations would, what the proposal includes, but we thought that would be best to hear from Sino at Synovations herself. The one thing that I would share with, with you, that we've shared with the Space and Properties Committee, is if this is something that the board, some members of the board are supportive of, and other members of the board are not, then I guess we would recommend as staff that you don't approve it, because this is not effective unless the entire board is supportive of moving forward with it. You know, if fifteen people participate and the other ten do not, this isn't going to give us any information or outcome that would make moving forward successful. And if, if there's things in the proposal that you would want changed or don't like, I think it's, it's still a proposal that could be modified to meet the county's needs. But again, it was, it's just being presented as an option to kind of address, is there a path forward, and what it might be? And if there's not, then we know it, and we can kind of move on with, with, with next sets of plans. So with that, if I could just turn it over to Synovations, and Sino, are you on and ready to go?
I am here, ready to go. So, can everybody hear me all right? Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Ready. Okay. I am on vacation, and I, this is important to Portage County, and it's important to me that I just walk through this really briefly, and then you can ask questions, have conversation, and I'm here to listen. So let's go to slide two. Next slide. There we go. This is me. I've had my own business for thirty-plus years. I've got a master's degree in educational psychology. I've worked with a lot of large design-build type projects, many of which were stuck and in trouble, and I've used my skills to help them get unstuck and move forward. And that's how I came to be recommended for this project. I've worked with government, designing, construction projects, as both an individual and a team coach, a facilitator, and a resolution-oriented consultant. And I've been told I bring skills of deep listening, nonjudgment, and consensus building. I am truly neutral. I do not have any reason to want any of the potential solutions that you could come to. I know you're pretty stuck, and so my desire would be to help you get unstuck, if that's what everybody wants. And just in case, so you know me, I have two sons, two and a half granddaughters, two cats, a dog, and I live in St. Paul, Minnesota. So just, just up the ways a bit from all of you. So next slide. Here's what I know, and there is so much I don't know, and I know that, that there's a shared agreement of the need to do something, that there are safety and security concerns with the jail. And it seems like there's a sense of urgency, again, to do something, and you've been trying for twenty-plus years to do something, and are still seemingly stuck. So the, it sounds like the most divisive issue is where the location of the courthouse and jail is determined. And so, is it downtown Stevens Point? Is it a greenfield location? Or is there, are there other possibilities? And that, when I listen to Chris and Jenny, it just sounds kind of like Groundhog, and when I Googled Stevens Point and Portage County to learn a little bit more, it just feels a little bit like Groundhog's Day. So next slide. The big goal of what is being proposed is pretty simple. It's to understand the many diverse perspectives that are being held by the key people and the key stakeholders in this situation, and, and what possibilities might be out there, and then to determine if there's an actionable path forward. And, okay, so that's, that's the big goal. Just that last piece, is there an actionable path forward? And as Jenny said earlier, it, there may not be. You may be too polarized, too stuck, to even try to move forward. Or if someone neutral listens to everybody who is involved in this situation, it's possible that you're closer than you think to really a solution, or a resolution. And that's what I hope I can learn from listening very carefully to all of you. Okay, next one. So what is this? What does this look like? Here's the proposed process. We can jump in and get started pretty fast, but to select a small group of five to eight county staff and professional experts, who are not a part of the interview or voting process, to help me figure out who are the best people for me to talk to, what are the best questions to ask, and what's the best protocol to use. And in that first phase, we determine those things in three one-hour meetings that would be virtual. And I hope to get that done by September if you support this. In the second phase, it's really about listening and understanding. So in the proposal, it says thirty-one hour virtual interviews, and then I would summarize what I've heard. And that would, I believe, be anonymous, but we'll decide that. But I think, as Jenny said earlier, everyone has to participate in this and be honest. And that's the best way to figure out if there's a path forward for you guys. So if you're thinking, I don't want to talk to her, then maybe we shouldn't do this. Or if you're thinking, I don't trust her, why should I? Why would I be honest with her? Maybe we shouldn't do this. So, so that, that's sort of an important requirement. So I'll talk to people, again, that small group will figure out who are those thirty people I would talk to. It would certainly be your supervisors, and then perhaps some other key stakeholders that might make a difference in terms of coming to an agreement. And then the final phase would be to, let's go to the next slide, to report back to this, this board. First of all, meet with the small group that I had been working with, and then report out to all of you, hopefully by October, if we can get this rolling quickly. And after my work, then it's your job to, to determine next steps. It's not my job to tell you what they are. And again, this is a proposed process, so if you think there's a better way to do this, if you trust that I might be a good person to help you move forward, then let's look at other options if you think this one is not appropriate. Okay, so last slide, just this, thank you. And I thank you. And now I, so is this where you ask questions?
Anybody have any, anybody have any questions? Supervisor Oki, then Supervisor Splinter.
Hello, please share with us, with us what experiential learning is.
Experiential learning. Please define that or explain it.
Experiential learning, must have looked at my bio. Experiential learning is getting people on their feet to try things out, and it could be, it's a type of team building that I use when I work with groups who want to come together as a strong team. It could be as big of a deal as a ropes course, or it could be something simple as sitting around and actually talking to each other about things that people on teams usually don't talk to each other about, in the best of ways.
Supervisor Splinter.
Yeah, I, I'm on the Space and Properties Committee, and for the last year and a half, two years, we've really tried to educate everybody up to a certain point, and then we took a vote. Since then, at eight hundred thousand dollars a month, we're about three million dollars behind already on additional cost if this project is ever going to get done. I, I don't believe in kicking the can down the road and putting thirty-five million dollars into a remodeling project. I think that's just silly to put any more money into this sixty-five-year-old building. It's done its duty, it needs to go. What we have, the board, being on, on the board, we, we have a, we are communicating, I guess, here on public. I can't talk to my fellow board members outside of this board member, because I just, I don't want to get anywhere near open meetings. But somebody from the outside, and this is like a thirty-five thousand dollar contract, is it worth thirty-five thousand dollars to talk about a one hundred and eighty million dollar project? Probably so. The options of building a combined justice center and jail, either downtown or in the Grand Circle, both of those options, I think, have what you call poison pills on the, on the committee that can mix either one of them, because nobody's happy with either one. And the remodeling's got to be, that, that just can't, we can't kick it down the road anymore. But I do think that if an outside party came in and talked about what I think is a compromise option, which most government is, most government, you don't get all the things that you want on this side, or all you want on that side, and then when they come to a compromise, and you watch Washington, that's about the only thing they get anything done, is when they have the compromise. My compromise is that I'd like to see this lady talk to us all, is potentially having a downtown campus for the courthouse, with plenty of room for whatever you want to do down there, and put a forty-acre site out for the jail in L.A.C., and have that out on the east side of the town. That's the one compromise I myself would make, just to get something going so we can avoid this eight hundred thousand dollars a month of not doing anything. We, we're elected to do something. We can't just have an election on the issue, and then we, we've let it just sit, and it sits, and it sits. So this, I can see as a potential, somebody, independent third party, she's coming in from the outside, she has no axe to grind either way, but if she can come back and let us know that county board member one, one-three, four, five, whatever she wants to sign to it, felt this way or that way, I don't think we need to be personal about it, but at least she can, she can give us a good idea of, if there was a vote, maybe this is a way forward. Or she can come back and say, you know, I talked to everybody, and you guys are really messed up. You're, you're never, you're never going to get this done. So at least we'd have an independent third party looking at us, and that can communicate with all of us. We can't jump around outside of this, outside of this room here. So if, you know, people have something to say, and I, I'm just shooting off the top of my head here, but I've thought about this quite a bit, and I, I, I just really, really want us to move forward somewhere. Thank you.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yes, hi. Yes, I appreciate your presentation, and I certainly have no reason to distrust or, you know, doubt your ability to accomplish this project that you're on. However, listening to my constituent, Tori Jennings, remarks earlier, as well as the letter that she sent me earlier today, I, I'm fairly convinced of her position on this, that I will probably vote no, but I would expect to be outvoted largely. You know, the, when the vote came down, the fifteen to ten vote, which did not attain the supermajority, interestingly enough, the city council president, Christiansen, had predicted that to me that week, that there was going to come down ten votes no for the Greenfield site. And I had spoken probably as, as an outlier, kind of a strange character in the room, when I said that I didn't think the project in the Greenfield was sustainable, and I cited sustainability as a reason not to do it. There wasn't, that wasn't a widely accepted idea. That wasn't, that wasn't a widely accepted idea. But I did listen to my constituents, and the Ridge, Park Ridge President was opposed to the Greenfield and said, keep it downtown, spoke to the Town of Hull Board Chair, and he seemed to think that the board had an opinion there, keep it downtown as well. And then listening to various city of Stevens Point. Well, for San Onofre, since a big part of my district is also the east side of Stevens Point, I think I, you know, voting no on the Greenfield was consistent with representing those constituents. So, but if we do vote to go ahead with this, I will certainly give my input as best I can and my rationale for not favoring the Greenfield site. Thank you.
Supervisor Madine, then Supervisor Dubek.
Just a short point of background on procedure. At the first meet, I'm a member of Space and Properties Committee. And at the first meeting, I asked the question on our procedure. It was answered at the next meeting. I'd like to just give you a point of background on that so we're all fully aware. I had asked the question, can we be assured that this contract does not run us afoul of any of the government in the Sunshine rules of the state of Wisconsin, which we all know are very rigid, or rule of Portage County Board? For instance, the walking quorum rule that prohibits discussion of future agenda items or soliciting commitments or tallying votes among a positive or negative quorum of a committee or for county board membership outside of a publicly noticed public meeting. So then I asked, are we contravening that rule that applies to us, but that rule can be circumvented by us hiring someone else who may, in the course of interviewing, relay new or uncorroborated or unofficial information or solicit comments or tally votes outside of a publicly noticed public meeting? So the response then I got at the next meeting that we all got, and I'd like to read it to you because I think it was done quite well by staff. Staff is aware that there are some concerns about, among committee members, this consultation may be perceived as a violation of open meetings law. Staff has discussed this concern with both Corporation Council and the consultant. This process will be managed to avoid any potential violations of the open meetings law. For example, any information gathered would not be identified by a specific supervisor's name. Any information shared would be done anonymously or generally in the report. A violation of the open meetings law would only occur if there was a discussion related to an upcoming noticed agenda item. Conversations of that nature would not occur as no agenda items related to these meetings are currently noticed, and communication is recommended to occur between Sino and Corporation Council prior to any conversations that may be of concern. So then, at the meeting that this was presented to us, I was assured by the Corporation Council that more, I guess generally it would be that whatever slips from the lips of the interviewer, Ms. Adelson, Ms. Adelson, or interviewee, any of us, is absolutely protected from prosecution under the open meetings law, and therefore I voted for it. That was a long discussion, but that was important.
Thank you for that clarification. I know there's a lot of people that have had questions or concerns with that. Ms. Adelson, did you want to state something as well?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Supervisor Dubek.
I had three questions, but Supervisor Madine answered number two. Who's going to write the questions that she's going to ask us? Because that could determine the way her report's going to come. And question two, will all this information be made available to the public?
Ms. Adelson.
Can I? So, yes, go ahead, please.
Go ahead, Jen. Can I, can I just start? So we did have some conversation about what that would look like in the proposal. And one of the things that we had recommended is that small group, small group be staff and professionals, that it be individuals such as like Todd, Chris, myself, maybe some other professionals that don't get to vote and don't have a say on the direction that the board or other key stakeholders have in the project. That, you know, we would need to determine who those people are, but we thought it was best to keep that group separate from those that are decision makers. So we haven't determined the individuals, but that's the group that we were kind of thinking.
That group, in collaboration with me, would write the questions. And my goal would be to have good, moving questions that help me to hear what people's perspectives are, what possibilities are, where they're unwilling to change their opinion and where they might be willing to change their opinion. These are the type of questions that we'll write. Exactly, we'll write those together.
Okay.
Public.
Made available to the public. I think everything that we do, well, the report will be given to the board at the end. So all of the stuff that comes to the board is always available to the public.
Right.
Supervisor Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We heard Sino in her talk earlier, talk about how, excuse me, I got a little feedback here, talk about how that we have to be all in on this. I would ask that the board takes a vote on this, and if somebody decides to vote against it, that we come right back and then vote it down. Because if we're not all in on this, it's not worth doing it. If there's supervisors that think that this isn't worthy of the time, we need to bring it right back, and I will make that motion to reconsider afterwards. Right away, I would ask if you call on that, because if just one supervisor doesn't want to do this, it isn't worth doing it.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Earlier heard another supervisor say that they were not, they would vote no, but if it passed, they would be willing to participate fully. So I think that that would be an important question to ask everybody at the end, if it passed.
That they would all be, I think that if we vote yes, we are all accepting the fact that we are going to be involved in it and make some conscious and strong effort to make ourselves available to help facilitate this. Is that a fair statement, everybody? Supervisor Oki, you got your hand up?
Yes, I did. I do respect this process tremendously, and I think it has advantages beyond what we can grasp as a board. Because the process involves coaching and organizational consulting. Beyond that, when that process is done, there is nothing that's pulling us together. It's all on us. Sino, you would make your recommendations as to whether we can understand diverse perspectives. Now, that's an interesting mindset when we consider the discussion that we heard already. And we'll do that to determine if there is an accountable path forward. So I don't, I think, once again, I respect it, and I would jump in both feet. I'm not so sure everyone else will.
Supervisor Dodge, then, go ahead Supervisor Dodge, then Supervisor Keller.
I had some reservation about funding this, but then I heard that there was one of our county board supervisors that had made a comment at a meeting that the county reps and the city reps need marriage counseling. And when I heard that, I thought, hmm. And then I thought about it, and I'm hoping that this will provide some of that, or at least some direction as to how we can all start on the same page. So I'm in favor of it.
Supervisor Keller, then Supervisor Gifford again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I must have been reading something or something, so I apologize. I did not hear how this company was selected in the process. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just curious.
Who can answer that? Jen?
It was a recommendation presented to us as an option from our owner's representative, knowing that there's been other projects, building, design projects, and similar types of skills used by Synovations and other projects, not the exact same as this, but similar pieces in different projects. It was kind of thrown out as an option, and we talked about it as a kind of planning group and thought, well, it's worth conversation.
Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, just to clarify my remarks, responding back to Supervisor Jakowski, if I vote no on this and the will of the majority is to go forward with it, I'm not going to sit back and be an obstructionist and, you know, decline to participate. I mean, that would be, that would be an undemocratic way to behave. And we know, we all know what happens when somebody tries to overturn the results of an election that they clearly lost. So I would definitely be attempting to be a good democratic participant. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. Oh, no problem, then I'm up here.
You're about the size of a postage stamp down here, so if I didn't see.
That's great. I have a couple of questions for Sino. Could you give us a little bit of information on your experience working with local governments? And then if I could follow up, Mr. Chair, if that's okay.
Yes.
So I have worked with the city of Minneapolis. I've worked with the state of Minnesota, the corrections system, the Secretary of State's office, the elections office, the racing commission, and the Department of Human Services. So a lot of, a lot of experience with the state of Minnesota, also Hennepin County, and I think that's it, never, never in Wisconsin.
Thank you. I just was curious. I just want to understand kind of the breadth of your experience, and that was very helpful.
I've also worked with Nike and Johnson &amp; Johnson and 3M and U.S. Bank, so I have a lot of other non-government, non-architects, construction dude experience, too. I'm really broad in terms of my experience. I've been doing this for thirty-plus years, so.
Excellent. Well, it shows, your resume was beautiful. I guess I have another question about the small group of stakeholders. I think perhaps that may have been one of the sticking points as an outside supervisor looking into the process and how we moved through making the decisions and the choices that we made. And I really feel like the decision, the people who are in that room making decisions were from a certain perspective. And I respect that perspective because we do have to do something here. However, I feel like it wasn't very inclusive to getting folks from multiple perspectives on that committee to do this work in a more thorough manner. I guess I heard Ms. Jowsey say that we're going to have professionals there. That is perfect. It's exactly what I expect. It would be great to keep the politicos, us politicos, out of it so we don't influence any of the professionals' rationale. The, my question would be is, we have a county executive, and that person is elected. However, they are in charge of guiding our staff forward through these kinds of processes. Would the executive and/or his assistant be involved in this process as well? Because I think there, that could be a sticking point in this small group discussion because of how the process went in the past. So that's one of my questions. Also, I feel like I'm kind of like Supervisor Gifford here. I probably will not vote to fund this. It's not because I don't believe in you, Sino. I believe in what you do. I've worked with folks who guide us through processes in many different realms, and I always come out a better person in the end, and so does the group. So I trust and believe in you. However, if you look at our past Groundhog's Day movie reel, you'll see that we keep on spending thousands and thousands of dollars on consultants. And this is just more nickels and dimes of spending that we could avoid if, I guess, unless you're also offering to provide like a truth and reconciliation kind of committee, because there's just a lot of distrust by everybody on this board right now that we're going to do the right thing. And I'd like us to trust each other again. And that requires having buy-in from more than just the typical stakeholder. We need to engage the public in a more fulsome manner and the people who utilize these services. And I know this is a nonpartisan position and a nonpartisan office, but we do need to be reaching across the aisle in a way that's honest, wholesome, and truthful. So that, those are my questions. I apologize for the long diatribe there.
So before you answer that, Ms. Adelson, Jenny, you go ahead.
So I just wanted to follow up, just to kind of clarify the conversation again for the small group who hasn't been determined yet. But the conversation we had would be that anybody who was in that small group really is staff, not elected, not a decision maker, not a, another stakeholder such as, you know, we had on our list that, you know, potentially the city mayor, sheriff, head judge, that we, that the individuals, and again, those individuals would be establishing the questions, not answering the questions. That those would be staff or professional staff people helping to assemble those questions. And we thought that a way to address that and make the separation that that was really kind of important.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
I would just add, if you recall, Jenny, we said if you were probably going to be interviewed, you wouldn't be on the committee, or you wouldn't be deciding the questions.
Correct.
That was one key piece.
Thank you. Ms. Adelson.
I hear what you're saying about needing to reestablish trust. Sounds like that would be really important. And maybe a little bit of that could happen, but that isn't what this project is. That would be a whole nother project, separate, because we'd go about that pretty differently. And I empathize with that need. So, but this, this group, this smaller group, their primary purpose is to help guide me to make good decisions about how to do this process in a way that's, that doesn't infer any one point of view, but really gathers everyone's perspectives and everyone's willingness to compromise if there is a willingness to do that, or if there isn't.
Have any comments, questions, concerns? All right.
Thank you, Sino.
You're welcome.
Run, Dave. We'll wait for Dave to get to his spot here. Yeah. So all those in favor of the resolution, vote yes, and opposed, vote no. Are we ready?
Supervisor Morrissey.
I'll be voting no.
Supervisor Hemmerich.
I'll be voting no.
Supervisor Morrow.
Aye.
Supervisor Pataki.
Aye.
Supervisor Hakala.
No.
Supervisor Jokowski.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislavich.
Yes.
Motion carries 15 to 9.
Supervisor Matt Jokowski.
Yeah.
That, that was 15 to 9. You had made a comment earlier.
You know, well, we'll let it be. It is what it is. People voted highly. I just hope they participate in the process. It's just sad that, that everybody couldn't vote for it or vote against it one way or the other. It's, you know, hopefully everybody comes and, and votes for it with the process. I, I'm not going to bring it back. We can, we could vote to bring it back at the next space and properties if we want, but we're entering in a contract. Let's get it done. We got to do something. Doing nothing's costing us money.
Thank you.
I agree.
Motion carries. Number 13, resolution to reduce the number of bed licenses at the Portage County Healthcare Center.
This is Resolution 138-2022-2024, submitted by the Healthcare Center Committee, and I offer a technical amendment of changing the date from July 19th, 2023 to August 15th, 2023.
So I'll take a motion. I need a motion to put it on the floor first, so I'll take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Barry Jokowski, seconded by, seconded by Supervisor Duback. Okay, seconded by Supervisor Duback. So, I, this, I know that there's been some discussion about the beds, and I have gotten conflicting information recently that in the past, I was always under the understanding that there wasn't any value in the beds. Now I've heard that there could possibly be value in these beds. And I think Supervisor Morrissey, Morrissey was in talks with our staff, and I'm, I'm trying to get something that is firm and concrete with this because I would hate for us to give something up that has some value to it, that we could potentially get something for. And again, I don't want to leave, leave money on the table. So Supervisor Barry Jokowski.
Mr. Chair, may I move to send this back to committee then?
As an amendment?
As an amendment, please.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor, we got an amendment to send it back to the committee to look at it. And I think we want to have staff look to see if there's a value in these beds before we are willing to give them up and make sure if there is an avenue to get some revenue from them, that we do that before we just get rid of them. That was an amendment by Supervisor Barry Jokowski, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, just a question on the main resolution. When you say that there's a value in the beds.
License, the bed licenses, I'm sorry.
Yeah, bed licenses. Are we referring to the ability to take patients from other counties? Or what is the value?
It's just currency. It's selling the, the bed licenses.
We pay a set amount for each.
Supervisor Dodge.
There may be a value, but there's also a cost, as I remember. So we need to have both.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Supervisor Lattick.
Okay, thank you. What concerns me is that only in 2019, we had an average of 54 beds. That's not the high or low. That's the median. And it did go down to 45 beds, which is really close to the 48 we have now in 2020. And yeah, it did dip the last couple of years with COVID and et cetera. But if we want to make the healthcare center successful, I don't see any reason at all to reduce beds. I, I think 48 is about the bare minimum that you'd want to have. I know the study said 40 or something. I, I think more is better. And if we have a cost of a couple of thousand dollars a month to keep them, we're already spending four and a half million dollars a year to keep that operation going. It's a small cost to keep those beds. We don't know what the future is going to be. We might need 60 in the future. We don't know.
Supervisor Morrissey, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if staff is, is online or if they are present tonight.
Are they? No, we don't. Lee, Lee is telling me he doesn't think so.
Okay. I did have this conversation with staff last week before I left for vacation. And I did have a conversation with Executive Pavelski as well. So Executive Pavelski approached me and said, hey, I see that you're going to reduce the bed licenses. We, you might want to reconsider that. They're worth some big money if you sell them. And I said, I, that's not what I understand. I did a little digging with staff, and the, the beds themselves are, are not worth much if you just try to sell them. The state actually has an overabundance of them right now. They are, if they were, if the license was a physical item, they would be collecting dust on a shelf right now. The only time a bed license, and so I followed up with staff, the only time a bed license is worth money is if you're selling the facility. So then more is better. So if we were going to turn around and sell the facility right today with all those extra licenses, we would get more money for the facility itself because it has more, more buying power, right? It has more value that way. Because you can, you can fit more people in those beds to, to make, make the money you need to, to make ends meet. The committee has decided to move forward with selling beds because the facility that we're proposing to build is a, is a 40, 40-bed facility. We have, I forget exactly how many extra beds we have, and we wanted to be fiscally responsible and not be spending money on those licenses. It, I believe it's $170 per license per month. So, you know, that's significant amount of savings that we'll be, we'll be able to put towards other things in our budget, monthly level and annual level. So I, I don't know what more we can do. You know, we often get criticized for, you know, running in the red, and now we're trying to do the right thing and, and ease that burden. And we're being micromanaged by the, by the full entire board. We've done our due diligence. We know what our charge is in terms of the building that we want, we wish to build. And we are unable to build that building because we have inaction on the Space and Properties Committee. We presented our, our building plan. We presented our, our business plan, and people don't like it. But one thing about it, it's the truth. So we're not in the business of making money at the healthcare center. We're in the business of taking care of people. So I'm really hoping that we can do the right thing and sell, take, take, take these beds off the table so we can start saving some money for the county. If you send it back to committee, I don't see that changing much unless, unless Executive Pavelski finds someone to buy this facility, which he said he has a couple interested parties that are interested in buying this facility. So I guess if that's the case, and he wants to sell it, well, then we're going to have to run it through the committee to see if we agree to that. And, but I, I don't foresee that happening. So essentially, there's no value in extracting everything that is good out of the healthcare center for our community. The value is in taking care of people. Thank you.
In the committee chair to restrict our options. We don't know where we're going. And to do this is just that, restricting the options the county has, and that I don't believe is responsible.
Supervisor Hemrick.
I was going to second the motion. That's all.
Oh, we have, we have a first and a second on the amendment. Supervisor Splinter.
Yeah, I, I think we should send this back. We can hang on to the licenses. In a rather short time, they're talking about having another referendum and the, the optics to the general public, you know, they look at pretty simple facts and simple things. And if they see, well, you're selling off bed licenses, you don't need them, you know, do you really, and do we really need this? So I'd rather have the optics go. We're keeping that bed, those licenses in case the baby boomers finally start healing over, which is, I'm one of them. But at least their beds are going to be there. I don't like the idea that we're limiting the beds down. I think it's worth the cost to the county to keep that option open. If you're going to run a facility, run right and, and keep, keep your options open. Thank you.
Anybody, Supervisor Lattick.
I want to ask the question of how hard, how difficult is it and how much does it cost if we would happen to reduce the beds to get them back and add another eight or 12 or 10 beds? Do we know how difficult that is with the state and how much that, that dollar value that would cost?
Supervisor, Supervisor Morrissey.
Yeah, when I was talking with staff, right now, there is, there are multiple options in terms of how we can do it. We can place these beds on hold. So there's like an 18-month, I might have the word wrong, like moratorium, where you just put them on hold. And then according to our, our department heads and financial liaison, they said, you know, the state has tons of beds right now, and nobody's for them. So nobody's, no, no county-run facilities are asking for more beds because of current trends and how, how healthcare centers are run. So the beds are available. They're easy to get back. And to date, I guess nobody's even asked for beds back. So that's why we're just trying to be fiscally responsible, save some of that money for extra PPE, all the little nickels and dimes that keep, keep showing up, and obviously the failure of the state to fully fund with Medicaid reimbursements. So it's, we're pinching pennies over there, and we're doing our best.
Any other discussion? So we have an amendment to send it back, and that's what we'll be voting on first, is the amendment to send it back to the committee? Are you ready?
Yes.
All those in favor with sending it back to the committee, vote yes and opposed, no.
Supervisor Morrissey.
No.
Supervisor Hemrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Morrow.
Yes.
Supervisor Pataki.
Yes.
Supervisor Hakala.
No.
Supervisor Jokowski.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislavich.
Yes.
Motion carries 18 to 6.
Corp. Counsel. I don't have to deal with the, the original motion then?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Motion carries. It's, it will be sent back to committee to find out if there's any potential for value. So, number 14, approving a, updated human-machine interface and programmable logic controls with touchscreen software for jail control panel and amending the 2023-2028 capital plan.
This is Resolution 139-2022-2024, submitted by the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee and Finance Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisor Jenkowski. Discussion. So one of the things on this particular item is that even if we were to start building a jail or a law enforcement center today, it's going to be two years out. So we are in need of this now. So that's why the, this is on here. So there's no, Supervisor Barry Jokowski.
I'm assuming this technology would be transferable to a new facility?
By the time we build, it'll probably be outdated.
Before you get it installed.
So all those in favor of, of this press, I'm just going to take a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who said? Is anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries. It was just a delay. Number 15, approving and authorizing a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for services for highway radio upgrades.
This is Resolution 140-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Rockman. Discussion.
You don't have to use this if you don't want to.
There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Richardson.
This is Resolution 141-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Keller, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jokowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, Town of Stockton Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Iwansky.
This is Resolution 142-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jokowski, seconded by Supervisor Keller. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, Town of New Hope Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map. Kranzke.
This is Resolution 143-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Take a motion, folks. Motion by Supervisor Oki, seconded by Supervisor Duback. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town of Stockton, oh, I'm sorry, Town of Sharon, Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. Basinski.
This is Resolution 144-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Oki. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map. Wiza.
This is Resolution Number 145-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Oki. Discussion.
The zoning committee has been busy, I tell you.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 21, Revision of Portage County Code Ordinance, Section 3.1.6, resulting in the dissolution of the Diversity Affairs and Inclusive Committee.
This is Resolution 146-2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee.
Take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Oki, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. Supervisor Rockman, then Supervisor Gifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone that came and spoke so passionately tonight about this resolution. There's a lot to unpack about a social issue big enough to exact so much attention. And I don't wish to belabor the specific points made by either side on it. There's a lot of vitriol and misinformation surrounding it. And in some venues, the discussion has lost all of its civility. Though it's worth pointing out that indignation and offense, no matter how justified they feel, are not in and of themselves arguments. Diversity Studies has been painted as causing divisiveness. Let me be clear, DAI didn't cause divisiveness. That has been with us since the birth of this nation and will continue to be so until the American experiment concludes. It just happens to be the name we are using this time around to understand it and talk about it. And here I'd like to point out just a few insights I've gained from being on the committee. And here, I'd like to point out just a few insights I've gained from being on the committee. I've been asked why I fought to get on the committee, or why I listed at first my preferences for assignment. I admit that it was precisely that because I knew so little about the work it aimed to do. I further admit to the frustration at the seemingly stalled march forward with that work, most of which I can now see is less about the operation of the committee itself, rather, it's largely impacted by the inherent trudging of government operation. Or, as Adam Smith put it, "The only thing that saves us from the bureaucracy is its inefficiency." Many of the detractors point to the number of years with so little result, and I suggest we do the math. Beyond the fact that the committee was deliberately kept from any continuity of leadership after the new term via the displacement of every former member save one, let us assume about three years of operation, and let's ignore the canceled meetings and round everything up to thirty-six months. On average, meetings run about two hours. Because of transparency laws, none of the work may be done outside of the public eye unless there are department staff directed to do it on behalf of the committee. No offense, Robin, I know you do a lot of good work keeping notes in the agendas. I'm referring to the specific action items. We are not allowed in staff for that. That leaves us with a whopping seventy-two hours. And I don't know how much systemic change one can expect in a weekend, but I would be grateful to hear about examples for that kind of efficiency. Moreover, if we look at the appalling lack of action by other committees over longer periods of time to tackle big issues, often citing the need for more data in their defense, it seems that we are not unique as a government apparatus. And I'm not deflecting here, I'm just asking that if we are to use a measuring stick, we should do so consistently. But it would be unfair to say that this is the only reason for our perceived inaction. There's always more than one reason for anything. The world and all of its cultures, including this amazing place I've called home my entire life, owe their beauty and specialness to the very interconnectedness that sustains all of existence. That may sound a little high-minded. That's because it is. And DAI work is, in part, handed down from those ivory towers. This is another reason it appears to be ineffectual, because in and of itself, DAI is only a framework for examination. It asks us to engage in evidence gathering across disciplines to pursue that examination. I concede here that these examinations do little without action. But the same is true in reverse. Action that is not well-informed rarely locks its way into integrity or effectiveness. I don't believe the language of our committee ordinance was written effectively for this goal. The policymaking that would be most beneficial to the county should be the purview of HR. It is my understanding that HR would very much like to do this work, but has found its resources and personnel stretched thin as it is. And the same appears to be true of HHS, where again, these examinations would be best applied to action. And if this is going to be the end of our fledgling committee, I would at least ask that we incorporate that in ordinance language into the operations of both of those departments. The last bit I would like to mention is the fiscal responsibility aspect that's been used as justification for this resolution. If the members of this board don't feel that somewhere between six to eight thousand dollars a year, correct me if I'm wrong, is a justifiable expense to take a look at some of the big problems and check for biases, unintentional or otherwise, I really don't know what to say. How a government body chooses to spend the resources it's entrusted with should be its primary concern. But what we devote those resources to says everything about what matters to us, and this is a watershed message. Please consider allowing us to continue our work. Thank you.
Supervisor Gifford.
Well, hi. I'm going to kind of revisit what I've already said on this issue, that for me, this is not a matter of us doing some liberal virtue signaling, but rather, it's a rather practical, important feature that our county government needs at this time, and I'll get into that in a minute here. But I know during the public comments, a lot of people would preface their remarks by saying, well, I'm a white person, and therefore, I take this or that position on the matter of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So yeah, I can preface by saying I'm a white person too, but that my experience, the way my worldview and politics were shaped was done by black workers, Puerto Rican workers, and Mexican workers during my time in the labor movement. And this was a very practical matter of diversity, equity, and inclusion, because you had to represent, if you were a staff person, as I was, you had to represent everyone. And the equity aspect was, you had to help elevate people who were in the lower poverty range, let's say, in the workforce, up to a better labor grade and a higher standard of living. So that's where my views on this subject were shaped during my life in the workforce. But to get to the practical matter of why this is important for our county is, there's an ad for proactive effort of outreach, so to frame this community as a welcoming community, which is welcoming to a younger workforce, which we will need to recruit in this region to replace our aging-out workforce. In the ADRC, Aging and Disability Resource Summit Board meetings, we often hear about a growing shortage of caregivers for a growing population of elderly and disabled persons. As Supervisor Splinter often mentions, you know, we're not getting any more. Increasingly, we hear of these caregivers coming from the same population. So this becomes a source of endurance stress to have aging caregivers caring for aging family members. So we want to exert a lot of effort toward finding this younger workforce who can migrate to our communities in this region. We often have learned in the literature that the older two generations in the workforce do value diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. And you can do some research yourself on this. So it seems to me that if you're given a choice between a community that presents itself as welcoming and one which is more passive or apathic about DEI, many young job candidates, for example, in healthcare and caregiving for our elderly people, will probably choose the more welcoming community. So again, this is not virtue signaling, it's not an ideological thing, it's a practical thing about how we, how do we do workforce development? How do we do community development? Workforce development is the base of community development. So that's my reason for urging us to continue with this committee and perhaps reframing and remissioning, giving the committee a bigger mission to portray ourselves outward to the world better, rather than just trying to tweak how we are internally. Thank you.
Supervisor Soik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to let Supervisor Rockman know that I agree with a lot of what he had to say. I think he did a fantastic job in articulating what he wanted to say. And some of what he wanted to say is, if this committee is disbanded, that we should please spell out where some of this work can be done, should be done, and give them the opportunity and the resources to do the work. Now, I have been to, not as many as Mr. Elsinger, ninety percent of the meetings, but I bet I've been to eighty percent. I wish I would have been here a year and a half ago to fight as hard to be on that committee as Supervisor Rockman did. I got booted off here by the people in this room. I want to bring you the question that was brought up at the very first diversity committee meeting. And it was brought up by two supervisors that are no longer there. One is gone, one has moved on. Supervisor Anday asked, what is the purpose of this committee? Supervisor Robbie asked the same question, what is the purpose of this committee? And throughout the last three years, up to and including the very last meeting they had last week, the same question was asked again at that committee. There was a lot of conversation, but there's very little action. And it is because the lack of leadership that they were given on this committee. This committee needs to go away. This committee needs to draw up the things that Supervisor Rockman was talking about that are that important, that are covered in other committees in the county. And that's where they need to be, and that's where that work needs to be taking place. Also, the members of that committee that have the same feelings that I have as far as the work needing to be done, we need to look, we have four volunteers wanting to continuously help the community. When Supervisor Gifford talks about younger workforce and elderly taking care of elderly, and Supervisor Honle talks about at the last meeting that we only have four women on the board, and by the current census, we should have thirteen? Well, this is the type of virtual calling that takes place. Look around you. Look at the average age of the supervisors in this room. According to the census, we need more young people. Does that mean we go and ask Stan, who's eighty-two years old, not to run again? I don't think so. But this is the, this is the kind of, this is the kind of rhetoric that can spring up out of this committee. And that's why it's so dangerous. We need to put the work where it needs to be, we need to do the work, and we need to stop this looking and saying, we don't have enough of this, or we don't have enough of that, or we need more of this, and we need more of that. Because all it does is it keeps all of us at each other's throats. And we won't ever get anything done that way. And if you look at some of the votes that were taken already tonight on some of the agenda items, you'll see that. If you go back and examine the votality, you will see that we will never be able to work together and trust each other when we are constantly at each other's throat. So I agree with Supervisor Rockman. There's work that needs to be done, it's just not in that committee. Thank you.
Supervisor Oki.
So, thank you. So I think sometimes we get stuck in the way we are working, and it's important to bring forth a little, some critical thinking. An ad hoc committee could serve this diversity DEI very well. It would be in place to address issues. It would not only consist of county-county volunteers or board members, but it would cross the span in terms of county and community. Such a committee existed years ago in terms of the Portage County Diversity, Cultural Diversity Committee, and it was very effective. But it was inclusive of businesses and nonprofits and churches, and CAP Services was very strong in it, and they're still a very strong partner. And so rather than dissolving it, take a look at creating it in a different way, perhaps not meeting monthly, but meeting quarterly, bridging out to those systems and inviting them in, taking to perhaps even look at what they're doing that could cross the span of what we're doing. Someone's going to have to own it, I understand that. And so maybe in the beginning, it is owned by us, by a department, and I'm, perhaps. But rather than dissolve this, keep the presence, keep the awareness of DEI strong. And you can do it in a way that really is, can be productive, because we give it a mission and see where it works. But rather than dissolving it, at this time, park it for a bit and let it perhaps work in a different way. Thank you.
So just to respond to Supervisor Oki, I know that when this was created, the executive and myself had had discussions with folks about whether this should be a government committee, or whether it should be something that's private because of the fact of all of the restrictions that if the government has anything to do with it, we're held to the open meetings record, we're held to the agenda, there's a lot of things that hamper that. And also, the discussion, what we talked about, walking quorums and stuff, so where is a committee or a group within the community can navigate those things, and it's not so easy to do it with the government.
However, it needs government presence. It needs policymakers and legislators and government presence. You just don't, you just don't give it away.
And I'm just explaining and giving some of the history and some of the challenges that are involved in it as well. Supervisor Dodge.
There is government representation on many committees within the community, but they are community committees. I struggled with that when we were approving the structure of this, because it seemed like the people from the community wanted the community to be responsible for diversity and inclusion, which makes sense, right? But they insisted that it be a government county committee. Just listening to the people that spoke here tonight, they have issues in the community. They have issues with bullying at school. That is nothing that Portage County can regulate or, you know, we can address it perhaps through Health and Human Services. But the point is, the issues that are present in the community can be solved by the community, not necessarily government. I expected, once things kind of settled down, that the focus would be looking at justice programs, and are they addressing everyone in the community as best they can? Commission on Aging, about elder abuse and things, and concentrating on the departments within Portage County. So I think there's been a misconception about the structure and the focus of this committee. And it's not working. I mean, I heard the chairman of the committee at the last meeting, and I've listened to a lot of these meetings, I don't come personally, but he made the comment that we set that structure under the office of the county executive, and they provide the staff. But he made the statement that he has not spoken to the county executive relating to this issue since he was elected chair. This is the only committee that I've ever heard of in the county that doesn't have some connection to someone in authority or supervision or whatever. So I think if you're going to keep the committee, we need to pay a lot of attention to what the goal is, how it functions, and who it reports to. Because I think, you know, it's really been lacking, and they have been struggling. So we need the focus.
Supervisor Splinter.
I had to think a lot about this. And at the last Parks meeting, I'm the chairman of the Parks Commission, we had conversations at our committee, and we said that, you know, a lot of times, we're groping for things to put on the agenda, and I left it up to Ryan, and I said, hey, if you got a time-sensitive thing, let's get after it right away. But Ryan mentioned that he feels that we could look at substantial things with meat on it every other, every other month. And our committee, yeah, you know, let's bump it every other month unless there's something time-sensitive. So, and I'm looking at this committee here, and I'm trying, I'm groping for what they're doing, and nobody seems to come up with exactly what they're doing. And when it first came up, I thought, yeah, this sounds good. I thought, really, I thought I would be reporting to the Human Resource Department at our county to make sure everything is, you know, across the board with our employees, if they'd have an avenue to voice their feelings of whether they're getting micro, I can't remember the name of it. But, you know, I think before we dissolve it completely, I think we could amend this to go to a quarterly basis. And that way, you got some meat on the bones when you come to a meeting, and they can show what they're doing, and after And after a year or so of meeting quarterly, if they still can't show how they're affecting the county or the county departments, then, then maybe it's time to dissolve it. But I, I think they deserve another, at least, meeting on a quarterly basis and attempt that first before we trash the whole thing.
Supervisor Keller.
Thank you. I think a lot of nice things are nice things, proper things have been said so far. These are social issues, right? Social issues should be handled by society. People need to work together. So it should be philanthropy. It should be community activism, right? And supervisors can attend any and all meetings they want. I asked to be on this committee. I wasn't selected. I was disappointed. I've attended many of the, the meetings, right? So I have, I have a true belief that we as citizens need to work together to get close again and accept each other. I think sometimes these programs are put together by certain people that think they have a right to use government to push their ideas. Government has no place in social issues. Government needs to get out of their way and let citizens solve their own problems. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to speak. I, I realize there's a bunch of questions about what we've done and what we're doing and what the charter is of the group. And since the very beginning, I did my best to keep the charter of the Diversity Committee within the context of Portage County, the organization. Throughout that time, the question keep, kept coming up, well, you know, they're doing it at this organization, and, and they're doing the work at this organization, and someone else is doing it at another organization. And I said, that's great. You know, we did discover some of that work being done outside of Portage County, the organization, not Portage County, the county where there are defined borders and individuals and municipalities and businesses, all doing their own work. And I applaud those businesses and those people and those municipalities who are doing the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion, including that in their mission statement to, to make their communities and their businesses and themselves more inclusive, creating for belonging in their, you know, around them as an org or as a person. So my focus has always been on Portage County, the organization. So I heard somebody, I think Supervisor Dodge said to, you know, we should be partnering with the community. Other organizations are, are do, already doing this work. If we're going to partner with these organizations and continue this work moving forward, we have to be willing and ready to evaluate ourselves as an organization. If we were unwilling to do this work, if I'm unwilling to do this work as a person, how could I possibly lead a committee of people to do this work for an organization? That's, those are the questions I want to ask. Because when, when this committee was set up back in twenty-twenty-two, it was set up with a very different membership. It was set up with two supervisors, one supervisor that was on it, and two supervisors, one of which didn't want to be on it when I asked them, and the other who had been a part of the opposition to its creation from the, from its inception. Yet, our chair thought it was a good idea to place him on that committee. So, the, the community fought to put Andrew and myself back on this committee, or on this committee, and keeping Joe and Honnell on there. Once that happened, the county executive removed all of the existing community members on that committee, asking them various questions about how they knew me, how, that, what their relationship to me was. I don't know why such an infatuation with me on this, but I wanted to make sure that this committee would go nowhere. And I'll remind you, I've said this in a public meeting before, the executive did tell me he totally intended to dissolve this meet, this committee within his, within his first month in office. So Supervisor Dodge, when you asked me, how come I don't talk with him? Well, that has a little bit to do with it, but he also put his staff person in charge of this committee, who has the staff to, to help facilitate it. And she was involved with the opposition to this committee since inception as well, as a private citizen. So, this committee, in my opinion, has been designed to fail since its beginning. The first two years were very rocky. I've been to, I was at the meetings while we were in the height of COVID. I had to physically escort members who felt unsafe out of that committee. I've told this board that before. I've been mocked for that decision by supervisors and the staff that the executive provided. We don't have a professional staff person to do this work. I'm chair, vice chair of HR, and I know that our HR staff would love to be doing this work, but they are not staffed to do it. HHS would love to do this work, and they're doing some of it, but they are not staffed fully enough to do this in a, in a fulsome manner. My first action was to do a readiness assessment for the entire county staff to see if we're ready to do this work. And the committee said, oh, we don't need to do that. It costs money. That would have told us whether or not we are ready to do this work and how we could have approached it in a meaningful way. We're since the beginning. I apologize. I'll wait for my next call.
Supervisor Syke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going to address this to you. I believe that comment was directed towards me to be thrown off the committee because I was not in favor of the committee from the get-go. Now, I've been told numerous times that when the committee was formed, it was a unanimous vote. So that would have had to mean that I voted yes for it. What I was upset with was the continuously being marginalized by Chair Maresi at every turn, even before the committee was started, with the comment of, go sit down, read, and educate yourself. Those were his words at your executive ops committee meeting, Mr. Chair. Go sit down, read, and educate yourself. Well, that might work great for seventy or eighty percent of the people. In society, not in this room, but in society that have that ability, some of us don't. And to sit and say that I don't have the qualifications to be on that committee, I apologize, I wasn't here to stand up and fight for myself to be on that committee as I so wished to be, because I was at, physically at those meetings. Not virtually, not saying I was at eighty percent of them, I was there. I submitted resolutions that the community wanted submitted, but the, the committee wouldn't take them up. So I, as a supervisor, submitted the resolutions. And after sixty days, they were put on. And never got emotion or a second to be heard or discussed by the committee. How is that inclusive? When the committee tells the people, bring us what you want to talk about, and we will, and then they sit silent on it? So, no, I wasn't obstructing the committee, but I was tired of being marginalized at every turn by the committee chair, Mr. Chair. So thank you for giving me the time to address you, Mr. Chair, and air my grievances. Thank you.
Supervisor Dodge.
How about an amendment to send this back to executive committee for review and setting goals for this commi, committee?
A second.
We got a motion to send it back to committee and, and restate your amendment, please, for the clerk.
For the executive committee to review the goals of this committee and their role in county government, I guess I would like, for starters. But somebody has got to set a structure for this committee that we can all agree to. It's obvious we have personnel conflicts, and we've seen it more than once in this meeting and other meetings, and somehow we have to address it and come to some coexistence, I guess, almost, and try. I think they should be evaluating the county programs. We have no business in workforce development, sorry, Bob, or, I mean, those are organizations, I'm assuming, or businesses that can address that. We have no, no role in that as far as government is concerned. If it was the city, maybe they'd have ordinances that would apply, but I just think that somebody's got to go back and relook at this and see what we have as expectations for this committee.
Supervisor Syke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I need to speak a little bit to what Supervisor Dodge just stated. I really like Jeannie, and I've, I've learned a lot in my three years from her and her experiences on the board. The diversity that we all experience here in this room comes from that committee. And it's going to continue. And they've had three and a half years to answer that age-old question. From the very first meeting to the very last meeting, what is our purpose? We have, they have had ample amount of time. They have extremely qualified people on the committee. You know, we, we have a, a committee that we have a, a vice chair, a female vice chair, only to be told that her only role in the committee is to run meetings when the chair can't attend. But yet, when the chair can't attend, he doesn't allow the vice chair, who's a woman, to run the meetings. He just cancels them. We haven't even got into how many of the meetings have been canceled. We have given this committee ample time. And Supervisor Dodge, I, I do respect your opinion. I have learned a great deal from you, but I have, not enough, but I, I, I'm still my own person, and I will have to disagree with you on this one. I, I'm sorry, but I.
So you're a no vote.
To, to your amendment, yes.
So, okay, we've got Supervisor Maresi has his hand up, and then Supervisor Honnell, did you have your hand up after that as well? Or, no, okay. Supervisor Maresi, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to address Supervisor Dodge's comment that we need to reevaluate the charge of the committee and make sure we're not working outside of, or outside in the community. And, and that's been my focus. My focus has been to work within the confines of Portage County, the organization. I, I really have tried. I put forth a readiness assessment, uh, option, which readiness assessment is, you know, hiring a consultant, much like Sino, to come in, evaluate with a core team how, how we are going to ask some questions. And then we go in and we ask staff, you know, what their awareness is of such issues, such as diversity, equity, inclusion, I'll just say that generically, and then, and, and how we're approaching them from a county perspective, to, to provide the, the greatest services that we possibly can within the confines of a very limited budget. I, I've tried putting that forward. It was, it was dismissed. I also asked for position request for a DEI coordinator position that would work across departments to kind of tear down the silos and evaluate programming and the needs of our community, so that we could better serve folks and make sure that, you know, if there are any gaps in our services and how we're providing them, you know, what we can do to fix them. And if there aren't any gaps, then so be it. We're doing a great job. I asked for those positions during, during budget season, you know, this is the time to ask for those, and it went nowhere. Again, people continually asking for more time to evaluate that. The hardest part about being on this committee is not having professional staff. I, I have been involved in this work for a very long time. I do not get paid professionally for it. I do not have a degree in diversity studies at all. I have a, a great base of knowledge, but I have a lot to learn. And the burden of putting forth an agenda each month, trying to create something that I think will generate consensus for this committee, has been incredible challenge. I, I will admit it. Because my goal here is not to like, promote any sort of radical leftist agenda. My, my honest and sincere goal with this committee is to put forth items that create consensus that we can agree on. And there are a number of those things that we could agree on. And it took a little bit of brick, brick and mortar building to, to, to get our knowledge base up to a place where we could move forward in a meaningful way. And just as we started making those steps forward, the rug is kind of being pulled out from underneath us, from, from the executive ops committee. I was never, like, counseled on this, that nobody came to me and said, hey, we're going to dissolve your committee, what do you think? Or, hey, do you think you shouldn't dissolve your committee? You haven't done anything. You haven't put forth a resolution. You haven't done this or that. Well, we have done a lot. We have created a lot of good dialogue with, I would say, a very diverse group. Our committee is very diverse in terms of its economic status, its cultural status, its gender status, and its political differences and similarities. We have, we have a diverse group, and I, it's a testament from the group that we had a member put forth a motion to get this agenda item on the floor, and someone seconded it. And we had a very fulsome discussion about what it meant. But when it came time to vote to dissolve our committee, nobody put forth a motion to dissolve it, and all discussion stopped at that point. And I think that's a testament that says that we should continue to do this work, and we should do it meaningfully. How, what that looks like is, is going to be a tough, tough discussion, perhaps at another executive operations committee. But, you know, we, we need people, maybe on, even on executive ops, that represent a more diverse background than just the people who are making decisions for us, five people making decisions for us at executive ops, and how this committee is going to look and how it's going to function. I think we're in a mess and in a pickle because of that committee in the first place. Thank you.
Supervisor Splinter.
I agree with Supervisor Dodge's amendment. I think going back to the executive ops and then having the Diversity Committee itself attend that, that would be a great forum to, one, define your purpose, define what your goals are, and actually, you know, you could actually, without coming back here, decide mutually, decide whether this should be a monthly meeting or a bimonthly or even a quarterly meeting. That could all be accomplished, I think, in, in, in an executive ops committee forum. Thank you.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
Point of clarification.
As far as?
As far as the last diversity.
As far as the last diversity meeting, there was a motion, it was seconded, and the chair himself, after the lengthy discussion, said, "I will look to take a motion for action on this." And everybody sat silent. They did not call the question on the floor. The chair himself said, "I will now entertain a motion to take action on this." So, a point of clarification, they never called the question properly, according to Roberts rules. And anybody can go back and watch that meeting and see exactly what I'm talking about.
I'll just offer this, and not contrary to what you're saying in terms of how it was phrased-
Do some mic, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry again. But the way it came up is the committee, as I remember, the committee asked, what is it we're asked to do? And the chair said, "You can either act on this with a yea or a nay, or you can take no action." That's how I recall it, so. And so when the motion came, no one spoke because, and he did announce it three times, and that's how I recall.
Anybody else? Supervisor Madine?
Can you read the motion so we have a better understanding of what it really entails?
This is an amendment.
Excuse me, the amendment.
Yep. Supervisor Dodge, do you want to help us with the amendment as well?
To refer back to the Executive Ops Committee for a discussion relating to goals and, I don't know, opportunities for the diversity committee to continue. You know, how many times do they meet? Somebody's got to decide that, and I understand that Mr. Maresi does not appreciate the membership of the Executive Ops Committee, only from my observation. But they are the committee that was elected by this body to provide direction and supervision. So it has to be the Executive Ops Committee. That's not part of the motion, by the way.
Supervisor Maresi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to point out the irony of the fact that we're, you're going to send this back to committee so that the Executive Operations Committee can choose the goals and kind of what the language is for the diversity committee without actually having any representation from marginalized communities. That is the whole point of this committee, is to create representation within county government for marginalized communities, to let their voices sing, so we can better understand what is happening in our community from lenses outside of what we see every single day, and leads us to draw conclusions like, there's no problem here, everything is okay, you know, I have a black friend, you know, things like that. Like, this is the irony of sending it back to committee, to have the Executive Operations Committee reevaluate what it means to have a diversity committee. I'm with Supervisor Soik here. If you're going to, you should just nix it altogether. Don't send it back to have it chopped up and continue the pain of this. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Everybody else, I agree with some of what Mr. Maresi's saying as well, but it's, I think that, you know, we've talked about this, and now we're talking about an amendment of sending this back to Executive Ops. And it's like, you know, and I am trying to be as open-minded as I can, and I think about the makeup of that particular committee, and I don't know if they are the best ones in order to try and figure out what this makeup of this committee or direction of this committee should be, because I think they struggle with it as much as anybody else. Supervisor Dodge?
I received an email on my county email, and it was from an individual, I don't remember the name, and I wouldn't tell you anyway, but they suggested that you eliminate the four people that were appointed more recently and reappoint the former citizens because they had a goal or an idea of where this committee would go. And I guess, I'm kind of curious, what was that goal that those former members had? And maybe Mr. Maresi can tell us about that. Personally, I think you have some excellent citizens on the committee right now. They are diverse. They represent segments of the population of Portage County.
So you bring up the fact of the past committee, and, again, they, at least, they had had several resolutions coming out of there, even though they were more or less feel-good resolutions, is what we used to categorize some of those as, weren't really actionable items. And the part that I struggle with is the actionable item part of it, you know, and I've heard it over and over again about all these things that we want to do for the community, and I always struggle when I hear those. They all sound good, and they all sound honorable. But how do you do it? And then with government, we are, we have a, we can't, I heard somebody, you know, pass laws or, we don't have that authority to do that as well, and that's some of the confusion with the public in this, and what our authority is as a government entity, what we can and can't do. And this committee is three years old, and I've had supervisors tell me that, you know, we need to get these people appointed because we need to get this committee back up and running afterwards, and we've got so much good work to do. But yet, you know, and a new committee should have all kinds of low-hanging fruit, all kinds of things to work on, all kinds of things to do, but nothing, not anything. And I've heard the chair say, you know, he's trying to find items that are, you know, going to be something that they can all come to a consensus on. As the chair, it's like, it's not, it's, sometimes it's just the discussion, too. You know, I, there are things that are brought forward here that may not have consensus, but they are topics that we need to talk about, and we should talk about. And I struggle with what government's authority is and what government can do. And I've even heard people from the public tell us that they don't feel welcomed in the community. And I, that's kind of a personal thing. I don't know how, I don't know, there's so many questions I'd ask when somebody states that or mentions that, but I have been more conscious to this when I'm out and about, and I know that I've gone to my grandson's concert. And when I look around at the school from 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago, much, much, much more diverse than it ever was when I was growing up in this area. So then I wonder why, you know, I hear people that come in the public and tell us that, you know, that people are leaving here because they don't feel welcome, and it's like, that's, I'm hearing that, but that's not what I'm seeing. I was out at Pakoa for their plover celebration. I look around, and the young people that are in little clutches and talking and stuff, I look at the diversity amongst them. They don't see anything there. They seem to all be getting along, laughing and paying, and conversation with each other. I thought, wow, that's great, you know, and I'm trying to think where the other places I was. I try and pay more attention to that. But yet, I still hear people saying that this is someplace that isn't welcoming, and I'm wondering why we have such a melting pot, and I do believe we do. And is it perfect? No. Is this committee going to make it perfect? No. I think a big part of it is that I look at just the culture and time and what's accepting. Things that are accepting now, there was no way 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago they were acceptable. But I don't know that our committee is the answer to any of that. Those are just some of my thoughts. Supervisor Pataki?
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second. I'd like all the questions.
We have an amendment to the motion, so. Supervisor Dodge?
It's probably unusual, but I guess, considering as how the comments that Supervisor Maresi has stated, if he is not going to vote to go back to committee, then I guess I would withdraw my amendment.
Supervisor, how does that point of word, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeannie.
I was trying to remember what's the order, so I know it was your motion and who was the second. Supervisor Oki?
Suzanne.
I mean, informally, I think if you were to withdraw your motion, Supervisor Oki wouldn't necessarily need to have to, and then the vote would happen, in my opinion. But I think if she wanted to, and without trying to put any pressure on her, if after the discussion on the motion to refer back to committee based on Supervisor Dodge's willingness to withdraw her motion to refer, Supervisor Oki decided to do so?
I can defer my second to the committee.
Withdraw?
I can withdraw and defer back to the-
Okay. Are you doing so, I guess, is what the chair would probably want to know?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, I think just for clarification, if the person who made the motion, Supervisor Dodge, decided to withdraw her motion after the discussion on her motion, and the person who seconded it also withdrew her second, then I think that's probably sufficient for purposes of, you know, withdrawing that referral motion. And then it would be back to the main motion, on the motion and the second on the resolution.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those- Yeah, we'll do this one with the clicker.
Mr. Chair, could you please clarify us to what we're voting on right now?
We are voting on the dissolution of the diversity committee. The amendment has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Everybody at home hear that as well? We are voting on the dissolution that the amendment has been drawn, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. All of those in favor of dissolving the diversity committee, vote yes, and opposed, no.
Supervisor Maresi?
No.
Supervisor Hemrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Morrow?
No.
Supervisor Pataki?
Yes.
Supervisor Hakala?
No.
Supervisor Jakowski?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sislovich?
Yes.
Motion carries 13 to 11.
Number 22, authorizing a portion, a portion of the Portage County 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
This is Resolution 147-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Lattick, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion, and also, go ahead, Jen. Do you have any comments?
Well, I was going to do a brief-
Go ahead.
...situation. Okay. So just to kind of walk you-
I have a court of order on the last. Normally, you show the vote so that we can make sure that it is recorded properly in front of us.
It was.
And it didn't show it.
No, it didn't.
There we go.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. We're having some-
There's a delay.
There's some glitchy things here, so, but yeah, thanks for letting us know.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. So what's presented before you this evening is the county's proposed, the county executives proposed a capital improvement plan for 2024 through 2029. Just a few housekeeping or clarifications. This is a plan. It's not a budget. There's no money appropriated with this plan. This is used as a planning tool. When we sit down and pull together the capital budget, we will use this. But just keep in mind, the things that we look for in terms of the planning are, we look at, you know, if we're in a situation where maybe we need to borrow some money, we might package a couple projects together that maybe we had in a future year that might make sense to do now because we're borrowing money, and it's a better financially for the county to do so. Or we might delay a project because we're going to borrow money next year, and it makes sense to do it. Maybe there's not funding available. Maybe there's information that we don't have yet. So just because we put things in the plan in certain years, that's why we update this every year, because it's always kind of a work in progress. Things change. But we do use it as a tool when we sit down to do the capital budget. And you will get the capital budget when we present the rest of the county budget later on this fall. The document that I'm just going to kind of walk through is kind of the spreadsheet on the website, you know, for every project that we have in the capital plan, there's a summary, a justification, a budget that goes along with it, information about ongoing operating costs related to certain capital projects, as well as, you know, what's going to happen if we don't do the project, and what the history of the project has also been as well. So just to kind of review a few on the listing this evening, I would take your attention to project number six. I'm going by the sixth row. The jail control panel, that was approved a little bit earlier this evening. We had included it on here, knowing that it was going through the amendment process, and wanted to include it. You'll see that the money is shown in the prior appropriation year. If there's funding in the prior appropriation year, that's because it's been included and appropriated in a capital budget already, and it has been funded. The one thing I would note is that amount that's in that column isn't the money that's remaining to be spent. It's the full amount that the project was awarded. So it's not dollars left available. It's, you know, if we funded a project, you know, at a million dollars, and they've spent $900,000 of it, and only $100,000 was remaining, it would still say a million dollars, because that's what the project was given in its entirety. Under number nine, we do include highway road projects as part of our capital improvement plan, so you can kind of see the five-year outlook. Highway is working on that planning, but this was their latest draft in their planning for their upcoming road projects. We fund highway projects through both debt service, through issuing debt, and through vehicle registration fees, and then other, you know, county highway aids and county highway dollars. And item number, line number 10, we've listed equipment for the MRF and the tune of $3.7 million. You'll see way to the right, where we have applied for a grant to the tune of $3.7 million as well. So that project is completely contingent on whether that grant comes through or not, and we don't know about that as of yet. But you will see that if a project has offsetting revenue, such as grants or fees, we will show that. Not everything on this document is funded through tax levy or hard issuing debt. Item number 15 is the healthcare center facility project. That project is marked as delayed. It's still in the plan. I just wanted to make note of it because at the point in time as that project was moving forward, it was determined that the $4.5 million was not enough to fund both the operations and the facility project, and at that point, it was put on hold. So that project is just marked as delayed until a future determination can be made. 19, building roof replacement. This is a project in parks. Just wanted to make you aware that that's an existing project, but that project was updated in terms of its amount. Line 23, lighter elevation data update. We've done lighter projects before. This would be to update the data from the last one, and so this is a new project anticipated for 2024 as well. Line 25, government facility building, that project has been marked as delayed. This is the project that we have been working on, the master facilities planning. That's where this fits. The conversation earlier this evening on the renovations, that's also where this lives. So it still is an existing project, although we've marked it as delayed because we're not really sure what the future of that project is at this point in time. because we're not really sure what the future of that project is at this point in time. Sorry, just lost my spot. Line thirty-two, this is a significant project, the Guilfree water repair and remodel project. That's listed on here as new emergency. There's components of it that are necessary and mandatory to be done. However, once the project kind of was unfolding, we're addressing what it would take to do some level of remodeling on that project. That process is kind of happening currently. We don't have a figure on what that number might be at this point, and that's why it's listed as TBD. Some of the work will be reimbursable by insurance because it's work that had to get done related to the water main break issue. But now that, you know, the lower level is vacated and we have the ability to have an open space to kind of put it back together, they're looking at how that might look, and how do we make that building better for our more permanent future in terms of the needs for the Health and Human Services Department? Item number thirty-four is the county city building remodel and upgrade. That project is to address safety and security needs within this building, both in terms of replacing most of the major mechanicals in the building, from HVAC to windows to subpanels and electrical stuff that I would try to explain to you, but that's not what I do best, to also doing some remodeling within the facility to make some safe, secure kind of access points, provide for some upgraded rooms, allow for space to properly have court facilities, as Todd has mentioned many times. We would be doing our best to make the facility and the courtrooms better, but we're never going to make it a modern day courthouse, but we're going to do what we can to make it better than it is. The other project that I'd like to point out is thirty-five, the Security System and Storage Project. This is a project that we've also submitted for community projects funding, so we're kind of waiting to see what happens with that, but that would be funded. And then also pointing out line thirty-nine, the county city building single point access, this is another project where we would be looking at improving security at the entrance of the building to have a checkpoint for folks to go through, that would be a single point access for everyone who enters the building. And definitely, we would be doing that for security purposes. That project, you know, I will point out, has a significant operational cost as well to it, with having deputies staff to maintain that access point as well. And then we do have a variety of new projects, kind of between lines thirty-four and fifty, to demonstrate some of the upgrades that we need to do on our annex facility, the Lincoln Center, the Ellis Street Facility, and the Law Enforcement Center. So a lot of upgrades and delayed maintenance that should be scheduled within the plan. And the last thing I would point out is line fifty-four is the data center equipment. That was updated, it was planned for 2028 and we updated it to 2027. We moved it up a year based on conversations with our IT director.
Supervisor Lattick?
I'd like to propose an amendment to withdraw line item number thirty-four and take that under separate consideration, not only as a summary, but with detailed listing what we're going to do with thirty-five million dollars. And also, I see they have everything in 2024, which I don't think we're going to be able to do that in one year. And there's also an issue with the city reimbursement, and that's listed under other funding. And I had a letter previously to the finance supervisors on that committee that they were not willing to participate in anything unless it was maintenance. So I think that's a whole separate deal that we have to really dig into. I know this is the plan, it's not funded yet, but I think having it in the capital plan creates a different image to the public, which may or may not be done, and I don't believe it belongs in here right now.
I second that. Leaving that thirty-five million in there gives the general public the idea that we might, we might kick the can down the road another ten years, and I don't want to kick the can down anywhere. So to have that in there as part of our plan, I think it should be taken out for the moment. There's, to put that much money into this building, sixty-five years old, it would be a waste of our taxpayers' money.
So that was an amendment to remove number thirty-four, Dave?
Correct.
From this conver.
From the long-range plan, yep.
The long-range plan altogether, because then how do, how do we, when do we deal with it? When do we take any action, or are you saying you just want to take it off? Because the fact that if you have an amendment to remove it, then I have to take action on that, and then I'd have to come back to that after we have dispensed the original resolution or to approve all the rest of the capital.
I'll make my motion to just simply remove it then.
Second.
Okay, Jenny?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification on two items that were mentioned. One on the dollar amount, and this isn't to address Supervisor Lattick's comment, but I just did want to point out the city ownership of the county city building is twenty-seven percent. In the calculation that was estimated for that remodel and upgrade, because some of the remodeling is only on the county side, the estimate for the city reimbursement was not at the full twenty-seven percent. It was at an amount less than that. But it was at that amount for things like mechanicals and other types of things. And my second point would be to Supervisor Splinter's comment. The thirty-five million dollars that's being proposed here, we haven't engineered any of those planning. So thirty-five million is kind of based, a rough figure based on square footage of the building to kind of come up with a budget estimate. Until we did any type of design, we would not know what that actual number would be. But the point of the thirty-five million is to inform this body that it's significant. And when we say it's significant, when we put the thirty-five million dollar figure on here and put together this project, the intention was not to then decide to build a courthouse somewhere else. This is a commitment to stay here and fix this facility. If we're going to remodel and got and put in new HVAC systems and put up new walls and put in new courtrooms, then this is where we're going to stay, was the intention for a longer period of time. That's kind of the premise of this project. It's not a Band-Aid. And our facility director is here as well. He knows a lot more about that project. And I think our conversations, you know, in finance, and they were long and deep. I think, you know, as staff, men and women want to go spend money to engineer a project that this board is not favorable towards, to end up spending design dollars to come back and say, no, don't go forward.
Supervisor Madine, you look puzzled.
Another point of clarification, which I've known for.
Close your mic.
The, we do have the one million for the single point that's left in there.
Correct.
There is a couple of things that are kind of part of that, or at least very close to that, and that's the elevators. If the elevators are on their last legs, if they go out, we can't get people to the courthouse. So those are the kinds of things that we may have to do in consideration of what, of revising this thirty-five million to take care of. Those are essential to at least continue this building during this interim time when we are looking at the very best option. So I just want to make sure that that's understood, that's understood as part of this, of removing this, that it's not, some of that still may have to go back in. And I don't know if we have a timing issue with putting that back in, to make that clearer.
So I'm going to try and give a, come up with a compromise as well here, or something with this. And again, I know Supervisor Lattick had said something about the fact that he wanted to see a breakdown of the thirty-five million for each of the items or whatever. Jen, is this something that could be put back on that item, thirty-four, and have that discussion on finance with that breakdown to bring it back to the board afterwards, or, you know, so?
You amended this year's capital plan tonight, so you can adopt a capital plan and amend a capital plan. I mean, it's a, plans are works in progress. So I mean, that's, that's the board's prerogative.
Just so it's understood that, that thirty-five million dollars is not totally removed. There's some serious business that we, as a Space and Properties Committee, have to take care of to maintain this building.
It's, and again, this is just, this is a plan, and this is just kind of a placeholder to some point. Any of this money has to come back through the committees later on when it gets appropriated and approved as well. These are just, this is kind of a wish list, I guess, is, I don't know. So, Jen, help me out.
It's, well, it's a, it's a plan of projects that we're likely, or that are necessary for the county to do. Now, we might make changes when we think they're going to happen, or priorities might change and maybe they're not necessary, or, you know, funding changes and we make other decisions. But, you know, we kind of have to have a vision of where we're headed. And this is kind of our vision of what we're going to be doing with our capital planning. And so I think the thing about the courthouse remodel project is, you know, we had a project, it came before this body, it was a no. So as staff, we're left with, we still have safety and security issues to address. We still have mechanical issues to address, they're unresolved. So this is our next best stab at how to do that. If we're going to invest in new mechanicals because they need to happen, then we're not going to, in two years, remodel the building. That would be a huge waste of money because we're going to rip apart everything we just did. So, you know, we need to make some decisions. Are we, are we in this building for the long haul or not? And again, we've had the decision, well, we don't want to invest in the new facility, or in the, in the older building, we'd rather build new. Well, we just tried that, and it didn't work. So now we're kind of at, back at the other step of, well, do we remodel and invest in the existing facility? Because we still have other things that we need to solve. We still have mechanical issues, and we still have safety, security issues.
So I, you know, I look at this to some point, and I think that a lot of people would like some more details on the thirty-five million, and if that can be. And again, we change, we change and amend budgets and stuff all the time going forward. Supervisor Barry Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that statement, because I was, Supervisor Madine was worried about the elevators. If the elevators quit, we'll make a budget adjustment, just like we do many, many times, fix the elevators. Supervisor Lattick has a very valid point, he'd like to see it broke down. But when you start talking about, well, we're going to have to fix the elevator, that elevator will need to be fixed if it breaks down. Whether, whether the bird flies through the window and breaks the window, we'll have to fix the window. That's just a part of being here.
So part of this, the whole purpose of this is to make sure that we plan for, before the elevator breaks down.
Absolutely.
And I, and I have, I probably have said it before, that I think there's probably no problem with approving an elevator to get it fixed or get it updated, because I know that finance, or the facilities director has told me he's talked to other places that are replacing elevators, and they said, how old is it? It was, oh, as well, as old as ninety-eight or something. Can we get it from you? So, you know, that's a lot, a lot newer than what we've got. But, so Supervisor Keller, then Supervisor Dodge, and I'm going to try and keep this moving, because we're getting close to nine o'clock, folks.
Thank you, I'll keep this short.
Double per diems. I know it.
And with all due respect, Director Josie, what, what you're saying sounds to me like we're contradicting. A little while ago, this board voted to build a law center somewhere else in the city. So you're almost, in effect, saying what we're doing here is giving permission to stay here. I want to make that very clear. That is not what we're doing. We will address that issue separately. Is that right? I want, I want it very clear, we are not voting tonight to stay in this location.
No. No, I, well, my, my statement was, we've, we had a vote to, to move to a greenfield. We went to finance it, it failed.
Those are two separate issues.
Right.
You are correct. I think as staff, if we can't finance a facility on a greenfield because we can't get funding to do it, then we're looking at it as what is our option to, to move forward? And if we can't finance that option, we're presenting another option of, how do, how do we improve this facility to address the issues that we've said?
So, but we're usurping what has already been voted on, so I'm going to vote no on that line. I agree that that should be taken out.
Supervisor Dodge?
We hired a consultant this evening to talk with the stakeholders regarding the jail, the courthouse, et cetera. I agree with Mr. Lattick. This should be removed from the capital projects list right now because that tells everyone the plan is to renovate this building, and that defeats the purpose of hiring a consultant.
Supervisor Soik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real, real quick, real short. In the master plan that was voted down, had that been voted through, and Don, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but had that been voted through and we decided as a board to move to a green space, there was still money in that master plan to refurbish this building. We weren't going to raise this building because we had a new courthouse and law enforcement center. There was money in that master plan to do the upgrades to this building and turn it into something useful, correct? Mr. Chair, Director Josie?
I, and I guess I, yeah.
Regardless, we have to, we have to do these things, and we need to spend the money and do them.
Yep. So if there's no other discussion, we have an amendment to take number thirty-four out, and that's what we will vote on, and.
Are you ready?
All those in favor of the amendment of removing number thirty-four from the capital budget, vote yes and oppose no. Go ahead.
Supervisor Maresi? Supervisor Hemrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Morrow?
No.
Supervisor Pataki?
Yes.
Supervisor Hakala?
Yes.
Which one?
Supervisor Jakowski?
Yes.
Supervisor Sislevich?
Yes.
Which one's got all the noise, Lee?
Motion carries twenty-one to three.
Back to the original resolution is to approve the capital improvement plan. We got it already, we have it already.
We just.
So if there's no. I'm not going, we'll probably take. All, back to the original capital improvement plan, we have a motion, a second already. All those, Supervisor Barry Jakowski? Could I talk for about twenty minutes? All those in favor with approving the capital plan, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty-three, authorizing a 2023 budget amendment and transfers.
This is Resolution 148-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Dodge. Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Lattic. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Supervisor Lattic, seconded by Supervisor Peterson. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
A video on this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, StevensPoint.com/videos.